The Board of Appeal for Tuesday, August 28th is now in session. Just a reminder, please, make sure your cellphones are off, and if you need to have conversations, please take them outside of the room. In conformance with the open meeting law, I am reminding you that this meeting is being livestreamed. Now, when you're here to speak before the Board and offer testimony either in support or in opposition, we are interested in fact-finding and getting some new information. So use your time wisely, please, and give us new information when you're at the podium. If somebody has already stated your concern, put your name and address on the record and just state that you're opposed or you approve the project, okay? That will help us be mindful of the other applicants who are also on this agenda, and we'll make sure that they don't need to stay here until 2:00, okay? Or we don't have to stay here until 2:00. So, please be mindful of that. Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning. Calling the first case, calling BOA for extension, 600-913-175-GOV St.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, I recuse myself.
Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Jeff Drago at Drago &amp; Toscano with an address of 15 Broad Street. This case was before you, slightly over a year and a half, slightly over two years ago, and we are seeking a one-year extension just for financing reasons, get our final permit sets together, and we should be back on track.
Okay, and that's realistic?
Yes, it is.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to extend one year.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Calling the next case, calling DZC, 304-611-911, Talbot Avenue. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Attorney Derek Small, business address of 15 Broad Street, Boston, Mass., 2109. We are here today seeking a one-year extension of the Board's decision for 191 Talbot Avenue. It's a gas station, and the reason we need the extension is because there's still some cleanup of the site that's going on.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve one-year extension.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling the next case, the Board Final Arbiter, calling BOA 550-876-69 to 71 A. Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Assistant Secretary, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Attorney Joe Henley, McDermott, Bulte, and Miller, 28 State Street in Boston. With me to my right is the project architect Nate Turner from Argulis Peruzzi, as well as Chris Curry, who is the project manager for the owner. Submitted a letter in this regard dated August 10th, which I think outlines the case, but just very quickly, for an overview, we passed out the proposed revisions. This is an Article 80-approved development project that was approved by the VPDA in February of 2016, and the Board on March of 2016. It's an existing two-story, former Standard Rivet factory building on A and Athen Street in the lower end of South Boston. There's an existing outbuilding at the back, and what was approved was a three-story addition and renovation to the existing mill building, and then a rear extension for repurposing as office with ground floor retail and 18 parking spaces. Since these approvals, the project has been sold.
What's the number of units?
So, it was approved as a six-story building, and so the office use was going to be on the second through sixth levels, and on the first floor was retail, so it wasn't broken up as units and a gym use in the basement. So, property and the development rights were sold. The new owner is going to be an office occupant owner. It is the Council on International Educational Exchange. It's a leading international organization that facilitates overseas studies, and they're creating their new Boston flagship here to create jobs. So, the use is the same as far as the principal use being office, but what you have is a reduction in the FAR, a reduction in the height and the same amount of parking.
Tell us exactly what the reduction is.
Yes, ma'am. So if you look, just to help illustrate this, if you look at the third page in the letter that we sent, they're eliminating the rear extension altogether. This is the existing mill building that's two stories, it's going to go back. They're eliminating that altogether, and they're also eliminating the sixth floor. So now, rather than a three-story addition, it's a two-story addition. The result is a reducing, reduction in FAR from what was approved at 4.43 to 2.57, and a reduction in the height that was approved from 66 to 58. And this is consistent, obviously, with the existing approvals and where, that are set to expire in November of this year. So the second request here is we're asking for the Board to extend that for a year as we prepare for construction and permitting and the like, which is...
And the number, excuse me, the number of parking spaces stay the same?
Yes.
18 spaces?
Yes, ma'am. Yep.
Okay. How's the plans, Mr. Bazari?
Plans are adequate.
Any questions from the Board?
What's the motivation for the changes?
Costs and usage. So now, this was approved as a spec office development, and then through the market, CIE came in, and they have a certain volume that they need, and that's what they're comfortable with, and that we've been working with, the project manager and a pretty skilled contractor to kind of help us figure out what works best for the client, and that's, you know, where they think they can be.
Any other questions? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to grant relief requested, and also for a one-year extension.
Is that... And this had been approved with design review, right?
Yes, yep.
And it would be, continue to be media design review for this project.
Yes, sir.
Now, did this go through an adequately large project review?
Small, because the extension, now the additional square feet is like 33,000 square feet, but there was an existing office used there.
So there was no BC/DC?
It went through, yeah, no BC/DC, but small project review, but we still have ongoing design review. Thank you.
If there's a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, the G Card, calling BOA 838-415-212, Commonwealth Avenue. This is a change of occupancy from eight units to two units, a full gut remodel and penthouse addition, and one rear story addition. Proposed three off-street parking. Violation is Article 32, Section 32-4, groundwater conservation overlay district. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Sean Carlin, Mall Construction, 519 Albany Street of Boston, and I'm seeking groundwater approval based on approved site plans for Boston Water and Sewer.
Okay, Christian?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Christian Semenelli, Groundwater Trust, and we do have that BWSE approval letter.
We also have the letter, Madam Chair.
May I have a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 858-380-162, West Brookline Street. This is a full renovation of an existing two-family dwelling, excavate basin for new ceiling height with exterior patio. Expand roof, existing roof deck with new roof hatch, propose two off-street parking. Violation is Article 32, Section 32-4. This is in the G Card applicability. Name and address for the record, please.
John Moran, Alpine Advisory Services, Alpine, Weybach, Boston, Mass. Madam Chair, I file a plea of plea of approval for approval of the G Card.
Christian?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Christian Semenelli, Boston Water Trust, and we also have the BWSE approval letter.
May I have a motion?
We have the letter too, Madam Chair.
May I have a motion?
Motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
I'm going to call the 9:30 hearings. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals? Just deferrals or withdrawals only. Counselor, address, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Address, please. I have two. The first is 266-266A, Amory Street. This, there was a companion case with this.
No, sorry, 260 to 268?
260, 268, Amory was the other one?
And then 266, 266A. So there are companion cases, and only one was advertised from ISD, so we'd like them to be heard at the same time.
Okay, let me call this in for the record then. Calling BOA 849-678, 260 to 268, Amory Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney John Pulginie, 10 Forbes Road, Braintree, Massachusetts.
Tell us what you're requesting.
So, the request for the deferral is when ISD sent out the notices, they only noticed one of the properties and not the other, and because they're companion cases, as you would agree, the Board should hear them both at the same time, so we feel that would be the way to...
Matt, when is the second case? Is that ready to be scheduled?
October 16th.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date is...
Date of October 16th.
At what time? Was it 9:30?
9:30, ma'am. 11:30. 11:30.
Okay. Okay?
And I also have one more, Madam Chair. This is 72-72B Oakland Street and 74-70B Oakland Street.
Okay, for the record, calling BOA 852-415-72 to 72B Oakland. Companion case, BOA 852-419-74 to 74B Oakland Street.
So, we're just finishing up a few things with the neighborhood, so we've been asked by ONS to request an extension just so we could finalize that. We're very close, so that's why we're here.
Have a motion, please? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
10-16 work?
Motion carries. The date, please.
Does 10-16 work? Do you have it all?
That's fine.
Okay. 10-16, October 16th at 11:30.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other withdrawals or deferrals for 9:30? Bearing none, call the first case, calling BOA 838-091-1580, Tremont Street. This is to clarify occupancy and change from office space in two residential apartments to three residential apartments. Violation is Article 9, Section 1. The change of occupancy is an extension of an existing non-conforming use, and Article 59, Section 15, three-family detached structure is a forbidden use. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Board, and thank you. Philip Paresco, architect, landscape architect, representing the owner.
Tell us why you're here.
I'm here to have a change of use. It had been, the building was a burnt-out building for the last several years. My owner wants to make it into an all-residential building, so we would have apartments on the first floor, second floor, and third floor, so it'd be a three-family building.
And what was the occupancy before the fire?
It was a real estate office. That was a change made unbeknownst to the owner of the building, who has a residence in Chicago, so...
Having ownership here. So was a real estate office an upper-floor residential?
Were two residential units upstairs, so those don't change. The uses do not change. It's merely the first floor.
And tell us what the square feet is of each one of those units? Looks like the building is... Okay, and it looks like the first floor unit is a three-bedroom, and the other two are four-bedrooms?
That is correct.
And he's aware that you cannot have more than four unrelated individuals living in a unit?
Yes, he is. I have a list of who he's rented the building to, if you would like that for record.
That's okay.
They're all adults and professionals.
And what were the violations? Extension of non-conforming use, okay? How are the plans, Mr. Bazari?
Plans are adequate.
Any questions from the Board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, this is Al Groh with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go in record and support. We did host in a Butters meeting, and residents came and asked questions about the use, and they had no questions or concerns. They've also met with the civic association, and there are also no questions or concerns at this time.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Madam Chair, I have to recuse myself for this next couple of meetings.
Calling our next case, which is... BOA 824425, 101 Amory Street, also companion case, BOA 824430, 127 Amory Street. We're looking for a little bit of clarification. Are there two cases that are with this that were not advertised?
Yes, there are. So this is, these are two buildings as part of a site that was approved in the Article 80 process in February. So there is one project that has been in front of you in February of this year in front of the ZBA. There is 125 and 125A Amory, which are the existing buildings that are affected by the subdivision of the site, and those have pending appeals that we are waiting to schedule.
So do you think it's better that we have them all together?
We, these are the two new construction properties. The other two are existing buildings that are only affected by the subdivisions of these, so we think it's appropriate that they're, we would have preferred them to be together, but think it's appropriate that they are on a separate schedule.
All right, I'm going to...
Because 125 to 125A is mostly in terms, is rehab?
Yes, ma'am.
And also, yes, the issue is the subdivision, but if you can touch on what the subdivision is so that we are aware of that. Okay, but in the meantime, go ahead, Craig.
I'm going to call this case into the record. I just didn't want to do that ahead of time. So, the purpose of this, to erect a six-family, a six-story multifamily dwelling, 147 rental apartments with 57 below-grade parking spaces. Structure will be built on a subdivided parcel, A, 51,568 square feet, in conjunction with ERT 799676. The violations are as follows. Article 55, Section 9, additional lot area insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, floor area ratio excessive. Article 55, Section 9, building height excessive for feet. Article 55, Section 9, building height excessive for stories. Article 55, Section 9, usable open space insufficient. I'm going to read into the record the next case, okay, which is 127 Amory Street, okay? And we're going to erect a six-story multifamily dwelling, 140 rental apartments with 58 below-grade parking spaces. Structure will be built on a subdivided parcel, Lot B, 58... Structure will be built on a subdivided lot parcel Lot B, 58,236 square feet, in conjunction with ERT 799675. Get comfortable. The violations are as follows. Article 29, Section 4, GP OD applicability. Article 55, Section 9, additional lot area insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, lot frontage insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, floor area ratio excessive. Article 55, Section 9, building height excessive for feet. Article 55, Section 9, building height excessive for stories. Article 55, Section 9, side yard insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, rear yard insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, front yard insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, usable open space insufficient. Article 55, Section 9.3 Dimensional Regulation, location of main entrance. Name and address for the record, please.
Noah Sawyer with Community Builders, 185 Dartmouth Street, Boston.
And will anybody else else at the table be speaking?
Yes, hello, my name is Kendra Halliwell, I'm with Icon Architecture.
Joseph Lieber with Klein Hornig, 101 Arch Street, Boston.
Dean Peppe Demetrius, Assistant General Counsel for the Boston Housing Authority.
So, tell us what's being proposed in, but first of all, tell us about the big plan. You know, very quickly, so we know what to anticipate when 125, 125A comes along. And then speak more in detail on both these projects, which are a total of 287 units and 115 parking spaces.
So, Madam Chair, thank you. So, this project is an existing six-acre site owned by the Boston Housing Authority. It currently contains Amory Street Apartments, which is a 200-unit senior development for low-income housing. The Boston Housing Authority put out a request for proposals in 2015 to redevelop the existing housing, and then find other housing opportunities on their site. So, what is being proposed here, and was approved in the Article 80 process in February, was a renovation of the existing 125 Amory Building to improve the housing for the seniors there. And then three new buildings on other portions of the site that are used for non-residential uses right now. So, there, of the three buildings, 137 Amory Street has already been before this commission in February. It's in purple on this map right here. The two new construction buildings that are before you today are 127 Amory Street and 101 Amory Street, which, these two buildings are mixed-income housing being proposed by the Community Builders.
Tell us what the mix is that you anticipate?
So, both of these projects are intended as mixed-income housing. In Building A, 38 of the 147 apartments are set aside for residents below 70% of median income. In Building B, or 127 Amory Street, there are 37 units set aside for residents below 70% of median income. So, the goal is that these are true mixed-income communities with units interspersed throughout, and opportunities for residents of all comes across the property.
And for each parcel, give us the breakdown on number of 1, 2s, 3 bedrooms, and the square footage, please?
So, in, in 101, we are proposing 32% studios, that's 47. 42% one-bedrooms, that is 62.
So, 47 studios?
Yep.
Sorry?
62 one-bedrooms. 33 two-bedrooms. And five three-bedrooms. Would you like those percentages?
No, and what's the, this average square feet, square feet of these units?
Yep, a studio is approximately 625 square feet. A one-bedroom ranges from 700 to 750. A two-bedroom, approximately 900 square feet. And a three-bedroom at 1,200 square feet.
And how about 127?
Yep, in 127 for studios, we propose 51 studios. 54 one-bedrooms. 35 two-bedrooms. And no three-bedroom apartments. Each of these buildings also has parking underneath. We're building the most efficient building we can. We're proposing two stories of steel with five floors of non-combustible wood above that, with parking at the lowest level. The site is sloped in a way that really makes it beneficial and makes it work to do that. So, underneath 101, we'll have 57 parking spaces. And under 127, we'll have 58 parking spaces.
Okay. Can you speak to the violations on 101 Amory Street? What's required and what's being proposed?
On 101, our lot area, we're, we're just shy, the minimum required lot area is 148,000 square feet. And we, our lot area that is proposed, sorry, it's, it's a good number. Our proposed lot area is just over 51,000. And so, that resulting FAR, as the required is 1.0, and our proposed is 2.47.
Okay, and the height?
Yep, for height, the required is 35 feet and three stories. And we're proposing six stories over parking, it's going to be just under 70 feet. For open space, the required open space is just over 22,000 square feet. And we're proposing, on this particular lot, open space of 17,400. There will be open space behind the building for use of the residents. But we're also, as part of this large, the larger vision for this master plan, we're proposing various open space across the site and adjacent to the site that we feel make up for the tighter open space limits around this particular building.
And is anybody else counting the open space in their proposals?
No. We're, I'm, this, we're very specifically only talking about that one. We very much subdivided it.
And how about 127?
So, one of the reasons for some of the variances on this are connected to the infrastructure proposed on the site. So, this site includes the proposal of three private ways open to public access. So, there are many of the violations which, you know, relate to the fact that the street, that, the private street that is intended in, to be the front of this building, does not exist yet. So, we intend to build these three private ways as part of the phased master plan for the project.
Can you just show us briefly where those are?
Sorry, I didn't bring an easel. So, Amory Street is along the bottom typically on these plans. The MBTA orange line is here at the back. We're proposing to tie this, you know, right now it's a very paved, hard site, inaccessible, and cars drive all over. We'd like to tie it back into the neighborhood. So, we're reconfiguring the parking to make it more efficient, and bringing new private drives, you know, sort of defining these using the complete street standard. So, there's, there's a planted strip, there's sidewalks, there's parallel parking. So, these are east-west streets, and then a north-south drive that will link up here.
Where does the, where does the north connect?
This connects up to Amory Terrace, right here.
So, it doesn't go through to Jackson Square?
Our intention is that it goes through. You know, we, we need to have the city engineers weigh in on how that connection is gonna work.
So, you're not asking for that now?
We, we, we have asked for that as part of the Article 80 process, yes. You know, putting it into...
And will Amory Street go through?
Well, this is, and this is right here is 75 Amory Avenue, right here, which currently is a dead end. Right, there's the parking area here. And I believe these are private streets as well.
So, one, one is, Amory Terrace is a private way, and then there is also Amory, the next Amory Street is a public street that will connect through as well.
Okay. So, thank you. So, can you speak to the violations?
I have a question. And the, the private ways that you're creating, that will be only for the tenants?
So, we are, in the Article 80 packaging and the PIC application we're expected to file shortly, these will be open for public access. So, they will be private ways registered with the city and approved through the Public Improvement Commission process.
My only concern is not creating places where people can loiter, you know, and that are non-resident.
And will be maintained. We are, as, as part of the larger picture here, along much of the southwest corridor is the southwest corridor park. And we envision building part of that along this edge as well, and it'll be well-lit. There's, we currently are proposing, I think, a 15-foot-wide pedestrian and bikeway. I think the key is well-lit. And it's a great segue to our 125 building, which is going to be facing directly onto this, onto this new drive.
So, can I ask one other question about those private ways? Who will maintain them? Will the, will the city be taking over the maintenance of that? Will the development take over? Because we have plenty of those in the city, and I've had the benefit of having people concerned about them, so who will be maintaining them?
So, it's the, as approved as private ways, they have the responsibility of the, of the partnership that is working in conjunction with the BHA. So, we will be maintaining those private ways.
But that gets mandated through the PIC process, and we'll end up having to sign a license, a maintenance agreement with the PIC. And will that be the BHA, or will it be the partnership that's being created?
That will be the partnership. The BHA will own the fee, and we're doing a ground lease. And, but, under the ground lease, the partnership will be required to do the maintenance.
And how long will the ground be for?
A 99-year ground lease.
And then, why don't we go back and speak about the violations on this?
Yes, so... Let's just get over here. This is what 101 looks like. For Building B, we've got pages to flip, as long as you can hear me. It's going to face onto this new park area, the Linear Park, with lots of balconies and nice woody materials. The reason this building has so many violations is because there's no, no street there yet. So, it's landlocked in the middle of the site. So, even as we were trying to figure out how to submit for zoning, we're like, well, you know, one day, if this, if this were a street, if it were, if it were a street, we would measure this probably as a front, and it wouldn't be a violation, and this wouldn't be a front, or would be a front. So, that's why a lot of those came up. What we are proposing is a lobby here in the middle that connects through to the back. So, the, we envision the front for people to be picked up and dropped off and wait for friends, to be facing the park here on this new north-south drive. You know, Atherton is down here, and Amory is over there, but we really are landlocked. We are, you know, this feels like a back with a nice green space here, and this feels like a side, this feels like a front, and this feels like a side. But that's really where those side yard, um, variances are asking.
It seems like the relevant pieces then are FAR height, um, open space?
Yeah.
And GPod?
Correct. Those are the ones that are more concrete and clear. Our minimum lot area required is 148,000 square feet. And our proposed lot area on this parcel that you see here is, is just over 58,000. And it's right across from this future park. I also, the lot frontage, as we noted, none on Amory Street, but we're hoping to have a private way. The FAR required is 1, and our proposed is 1.92. For height, required is 35 feet and three stories. And again, here, we're proposing just under 70 feet, six stories over parking. The parking is, is subgrade. For open space, the minimum required is 21,000 square feet. And we are proposing almost 19,000, so we're really just a couple thousand square feet short, because we've got this open space behind the building. That number proposed is 18,856. And we touched on the setbacks, and the Greenway Protection Overlay District applies as a conditional use here.
And the green belt is, what is the green belt here?
The green belt is actually the, the orange line tracks.
It's Southwest Corridor. Okay, and so that means you'll need to go to the Parks Department?
Yes.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
The drawings are adequate, but I do have a question for the BHA. The square footage is, as stated, for the units, is that the BHA's requirement, the studios at 650 and...
I don't, in the RFP, we didn't go into that level of detail, and so, we did require that the developer would replace the existing units, which, that building is 125, and, and so they're gonna renovate that. The additional units on the site, we did allow the developer to have flexibility in planning those units.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so, just to clarify the related connections between the BHA and community builders, and this, how many people currently, how many, how many, how many units are there currently under BHA?
200 is in the existing 125 Amory Building. And that building will remain, it's gonna be entirely renovated. And, and then the other buildings around there are a way to have better utilization of the currently underutilized area.
And I, no, this is an excuse. The BHA will maintain control over 200 units. One of the, what's the total number of units of the whole complex?
So, there will...
We're, we're proposing a total of three, about 350 new units. We're, right here, we're here in front of you for 140 apartments and 147. We came before you earlier for 137 Amory, which was 62 units. So, that's the 350 new. And then there are about 200 in the existing 125 building that we'd like to stabilize.
And those in the existing building are purely elderly?
Elderly disabled.
Elderly and disabled?
Yes. And, so, the BHA will have separate ground leases for the, the different parcels. We will have strong restrictions to maintain the existing income affordability requirements for 125 Amory. That's the extremely low-income and low-income units. And then the other buildings, there'll be restrictions that they will have to have, they will have to have the buildings that they are proposing, but they won't be, they, they won't, they won't be the same level of affordability as 125 Amory, which is the existing building.
Any other questions? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Alexandria Valdez, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record and support, and also state that both the Director Butters, as well as the GOP Neighborhood Council, alongside other community members, are more than in support of this project to go in Jamaica Plain.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Will Pop Webster here with City Councilor Madam O'Malley's office. We would also like to go on record and support. The partners have done an extensive community outreach process with the BHA residents and the wider neighborhood. We think it's a good model of development without displacement in this underutilized area. Thank you.
Good morning, Michael McCleese from the Office of State, Representative Jeffy Sanchez, and we would also like to go on record for support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan on behalf of City Councilor-at-Large, Michael Flaherty echoing in sentiments of Councilor O'Malley's office, Council to go on record and support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I represent the Urban Edge Housing Corporation. We're a partner of the Community Builders and Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Development Corporation in the redevelopment of the property at 125 Amory Street, and we support this project.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Megan Camella from Councilor Savi Jordan's office. We'd like to go on record and support.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Eric White on behalf of City Councilor-at-Large, Diana Presley. We would also like to go on record and support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Minor Perez represents the Carpenter Resilient. On behalf of 100 of our members that live and work around the city of Boston, want to go on record and support.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Tyronda Ellis, I'm with the JTNDC, one of the partners in the organization. We would like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion.
Who's gonna make the motion?
Motion to approve. Continue BPDA.
Design review?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set. And we'll see you when the other partners are ready, 125.
Calling the next four cases. Calling BOA 838-925-71 CALL STREET. BOA 838-926-73 to 73A CALL STREET. BOA 838-927-75 to 75A CALL STREET. And BOA 838-929... Calling BOA eight-three-eight-nine-two-five-seventy-one Call Street, BOA eight-three-eight-nine-two-six-seventy-three-to-seventy-three-A Call Street, BOA eight-three-eight-nine-two-seven-seventy-five-to-seventy-five-A Call Street, and BOA eight-three-eight-nine-two-nine-seventy-seven-to-seventy-nine Call Street. This is for seventy-one Call Street. This is Bill, Building B, new construction of a three-story attached two-family dwelling. The violation is Article fifty-five, Section forty. Our street parking is insufficient. Article fifty-five, Section nine, the lot area is insufficient. Article fifty-five, Section nine, the lot area for additional dwelling units is insufficient. Article fifty-five, Section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-five, Section nine, the front yard is insufficient. Article fifty-five, Section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. This is for seventy-three to seventy-three A Call Street. This is new construction of a three-story attached family dwelling. Parking for seventy-one Call Street will be located at this address. The violation is Article fifty-five, Section eight. Ancillary parking is conditional. Article fifty-five, Section nine, the lot area for additional dwelling units is insufficient. Article fifty-five, Section nine, the air-to, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-five, Section nine, the front yard is insufficient. Article fifty-five, Section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Seventy-five to seventy-five-eight Call Street, construction of a new three-story two-family, which will be called seventy-seven, seventy-nine Call Street. The violation is the same as previous. And this is for seventy-seven to seventy-nine Call Street. It's also a new construction of three-story attached, which will be seventy-five Call Street. Violation is Article fifty, Section forty. Our street parking is insufficient. Article fifty-five, Section nine, the lot area for additional dwelling units is insufficient. Article fifty-five, Section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article fifty-five, Section nine, the front yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Members of the Board. My name is Matt Henze. I'm Senior Real Estate Project Manager at Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Development Corporation at thirty-one Germania in Jamaica Plain.
Tell us what's being proposed, please?
May I just also introduce other members of my team, starting with my left one.
David Frank with Dream Collaborative Architects.
Kristen Chisholm, JTNDC, Project Manager.
Joseph Lieber, Klein Hornig, one-on-one Arch Street, Council.
Also for the record in the room are Executive, for Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Development, Executive Director Richard Dahl, Real Estate Director, Tyronda Ellis, and Senior Community Organizer Erica Rothschild. Members of the Board, I, I want to call your attention to this great project, we call it Call Carolina. It is new construction on vacant land at the corner of Call and Carolina Streets in Jamaica Plain. A couple notable things. One, this is reclamation of, in part, of land that was taken during that, the infamous highway project in the seventies along the southwest corridor. So, about two-thirds of the site was, quite, site control was achieved through a site disposition process. On that, the other third of the site was achieved through a site disposition process through the City of Boston Neighborhood Development. We also have some Department of Neighborhood Development financing in the project, as well as Community Preservation Act, for the first time, as you all know. This is the first year in the CPA and we're glad to be a recipient.
So, tell us about the project, please?
Yes, ma'am. So, the project is a home, a hybrid homeownership slash rental, eight units, four new homeowners, and each of those homeowners will have a rental unit. It's a hundred percent affordable. We have eighty percent affordability for the homeowners, sixty percent affordability for the tenants. That's the affordability on, yes, ma'am?
Again, homeownership, what's, what's, what is it? Seventy percent?
It's, all four properties will be bought by homeowners. Within each of those properties, there is also a rental unit. So, each owner will be buying a two-family.
And what's, what's the guideline, the, the guideline for, for the homeownership?
Eighty percent air immediate income for the homeowners.
And, for the renters?
For renters, sixty percent AMI.
Okay. Okay, so, um, tell us about the violations.
Yeah, I mean, in general, I'd like to pass it on to Council Joseph Lieber from Klein Hornig, but in, in general, the, we have FAR, we have dimensional regulations, and there was a extensive community process. I know that's exact, not exactly your question, we'll get into specifics, to discuss those violations and to achieve really widespread community support around asking for these variances.
Sure. So, let me speak first to dimensional quickly and then I'll touch on parking, which, which is kind of pervasive here, but, but has an interesting backstory. So, these are basically eight units in, in four two-family houses on four separate lots. There's two pairs of adjoining two-unit buildings with the parking and, and driveway area in between, you know, the two, the two clusters of buildings. For zoning, it's four separate lots because these are homeownership projects, they're not going to be under common ownership. And in general, the dimensional relief that's needed is lot area per dwelling unit, FAR, front yard, and for some of them, rear yard. I, I would defer to, to my architect colleague, if you want to get into those actual numbers for each of the four lots. But let me just speak to, to parking for a moment, and then we can move back to him. So, for parking, we have zero point seven is required per unit for affordable units in this district, which would be either, you could look at it as one point four spaces per lot, or you could look at it as five point six spaces for all four lots together. Either way, each of the, each of the projects does comply. There are six spaces total for eight units, which is, you know, more than five point six. And if it, if you're looking at it by lot, the one point four would get rounded down to one and you'd only have four required. The reason we have so much parking relief that's needed is because two of the lots don't have any parking. The two lots on the outer edges are using parking on the inner lots. And so, those two lots on the outer edges don't comply, and the two lots on the inner edges, which are housing ancillary parking, they do comply, but they have an ancillary parking use for which we need a conditional use permit. So, that, that's why overall parking, I think we, we comply overall, but because of the nuances of the zoning code, there are a lot of violations shown here. I'll defer to David on, on the particular dimensional aspects, if, if you want more information on that.
So, um, for, for Lot One, which is, if you're looking at Z zero-zero-one, we have two.
Lot One, Building A or Building B?
So, Lot One will be within Building A on the diagram. If you turn to zoning ordinance page Z zero-zero-one, we have the breakdown of the lots. So, Lot One will consist of two units. Both of the units will be three, four walk-ups. And it will consist of seventy-one Call Street and one thirty-nine Carolina Avenue. It's, one thirty-nine Carolina Avenue would be about one thousand four hundred and sixty-six square foot walk-up. Seventy-one Call Street would be one thousand three hundred and ninety-one walk-up. And then, attached to that would be the next lot, which would be seventy-three and seventy-three A Call Street, Lot Two, which consists of, uh, it consists of a one-floor flat and then a two-floor walk-up on top of it. The one-floor flat, which is, um, it would be seven hundred and thirty-eight square foot. The two-floor flat on top of it would be, um, one, one thousand four hundred and twenty square foot. And then, we.
Go ahead.
And then, we have the mirror of, of that on the, on Lot Three, yeah, for Building B.
So, I'm looking at the landscape plan only because that's easier, that's L one hundred. So, is there, is there parking proposed in the, so that's the shared parking? Is that what it is, back there by the shrubbery?
Uh, yes.
There are two spaces in the rear and four alongside the, the building closer to the street.
Okay. Now, you know, we were just, we just had the other project for us, and I was looking at the unit sizes because their two bedrooms were nine hundred square feet and you guys are at seven thirty-eight. And I know, I see that you're, no, this doesn't make sense. So, anyway, so tell us what, why there's such variance here in the unit sizes?
Well, I would begin, Madam Chairwoman, with saying that the, the four-bedroom units, which are six out of the eight units, are about fifteen hundred square feet. So, it was very much our intent to develop housing for families. There is, is such a glut of small units because they're more profitable and for affordable housing, we felt we'd like to develop housing for families, so we've got very large four units. The two, two bedrooms are a little bit smaller, maybe, you know, maybe a little smaller than the other projects you referenced, but still fairly, in our view, adequate at minimum.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
The drawings are adequate, but I do have a question relative to the parking. There's an arrow, which I assume is an entrance into the rear of the property on Carolina Street. Is that, why was that? Is that a concession to the Butters?
Absolutely correct. The, that Butters actually lost parking during the highway project in the seventies. The Butters are actually still living there, they're a holdover resident from that time. So, as part of our very extensive community process, we said, we will provide a curb cut for you. We won't build your parking, but we'll provide a curb cut and provide you access to go through.
So, they have an easement over your property perpetuity to access their rear?
That is the intent. We have not executed the instrument for that, but that's our intent, yes.
Any other questions on the board?
Yeah, um, so, um, you've got a, um, price level requirement on homeownership as well as on the rental. Given, once it becomes homeownership, it turns over, is there a restriction for future? How, how has that been designed to make sure that won't happen? Is that with the talent to come in, is it as a churn that you maintain the affordability that?
Absolutely, yes. Our, our intent is to work and we have had, we have ongoing discussions through Department of Neighborhood Development to the Boston Home Center. Boston Home Center is a function of D and D, as you know. We'll, we'll do the marketing and we'll do the affordability restrictions in perpetuity. That, that's the intent. I mean, we, again, we haven't firm dialed it up, but the intent is that those deed restrictions will be permanent and will be governed by D and D.
And similarly, are there easements in the parking, given the description that they're weighted more towards one lot as opposed to the other? Because I, I assume, the assumption is that they'll be used.
Correct.
How is that going to be handled?
Right, the residents that don't have parking on their property will have easement rights. Again, that's in formation, but we intend to provide easement rights for use, for the parking use.
Yeah, I mean, we anticipate doing a four-party easement that all four lots would be subject to.
Any other questions?
Well, it, it, isn't there actually a five-part easement because of the property on Carolina?
Uh, correct. That's right. I stand corrected.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chairwoman, if I may?
Go ahead.
May I just submit for the record our community outreach process log?
Thank you.
Which includes about fifty layers of support. Thank you.
So, how do you?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Alexandria Valdez, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record to support and also say that Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council offer letter support alongside the Director Butters. They did have an extensive community process, a lot of great feedback was given, and the neighborhood is really happy with the result. Thank you.
Can I have representatives of elected officials speak first? Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Members of the Board, Will Pop Webster from City Councilor Madam O'Malley's office. We'd also like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Eric White on behalf of City Councilor at Large Diana Presley. We would also like to go on record and support.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Paul Sullivan, and we have City Councilor at Large Michael Flaherty, Council to go on record and support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Megan Camello from Councilor Savi Jorder's office. We'd like to go on record and support.
Kendra Halliwell, I live at twenty-one Lee Street, around the corner from one of these properties. I'm thrilled to see these empty lots be reused for housing. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Brian Leonard again from the Department of Neighborhood Development. This project is located on D and D land, has been coupled with D and D subsidy. We'd like to go on record in support of the project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Noah Sawyer, twenty-seven Woodman Street. I live a few blocks from the site and I'm great, glad to see your development, so I'm in support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, excuse me. Good morning, Madam Chair. My name is Lois Tau. I live at fifty Lila Road, and I have attended the community meetings about this project, and I'm here to, to tender my support and urge you to pass it. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Robert Corley. I'm a resident of Boston, ninety-four Saul Road. I'm in favor of the project, especially its unique use of homeownership and affordable rental, together with the housing crisis and affordability crisis in the city. Seeing homeownership developed in this way is very unique and something very much supportive. I'm also a member of the Massachusetts Association of Community Development Corporations, and we're very supportive of this type of project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve a continued BPDA design review.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Following the next case, calling BOA eight-five-four-one-nine-one, thirty-nine Rosetta Street. This is a renovation, two-unit residential building to become three-unit residential building. Violation is Article sixty-five, section, is Rosetta Street here? Rosetta Street's not here. Following the next case, BOA eight-two-seven-five-one-two, one oh five to one oh seven Lawrence Avenue. Lawrence Avenue here? Okay. This is a change of Roxbury to a six-unit building, roof replacement, window replacement, masonry repairs, electrical upgrades, selective kitchen and bath replacement, flooring repairs, replacement of needed heating system. Violation is Article fifty, Section twenty-eight. A multi-family dwelling is forbidden. Article fifty, Section twenty-nine. Additional lot area per additional dwelling unit is insufficient. Article fifty, Section twenty-nine. Open space is insufficient. Article fifty, Section forty-three. Parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Matt Henze. I'm Senior Project Manager for Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Development Corporation at thirty-one Germania in JP.
Joseph Lieber, Klein Hornig, one-on-one Arch Street, Council.
Tell us what's being proposed.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I would just say, this, the context is a large modern rehab of two-hundred-and-one units in Roxbury Dorchester. Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Development Corporation was approached by the estate of the Lorenzo Pitts Companies, and we have been working diligently for a couple of years to do this fairly large-scale rehab, and most importantly, to preserve permanent affordability for all two-hundred-and-one units in this portfolio. This is one building out of that portfolio, one oh five, one oh seven Lawrence Avenue. We found in doing our diligence and going through the permit process that, what I would call some ambiguity in the building jacket between whether it was, whether it's a six-unit or a five-unit building. In practice, and in reality, is a six-unit building and is operated as such since about nineteen ninety-nine. But within the building jacket, the record was inconsistent, so therefore, we got the refusal and we filed the appeal.
And which, and the unit that's considered non, non, not legal, what's, what's information on it? How many square feet? How many bedrooms?
I have to apologize, Madam Chairwoman, that I'm not sure I have that information readily available.
Mr. Bazani, do the, do the plans indicate any information on that?
Well, I'm a little confused because the plan showed twelve units. Is that correct?
It's, it's, yeah, it's adjacent to another building, so this, it's adjacent to one oh nine, one eleven Lawrence Avenue, which is a six-unit building. So, so together, that drawing set has twelve units. I think I have the square footage here.
Well, there's, and, well, I mean, I can give you the square footage, I vary from seven, call it seven sixty-one to eight, eight forty-nine plus one.
And are they primarily one bedrooms?
No, they're, the larger, larger ones are two bedrooms and fat.
And, and this unit is not in the basement or in, in anything that gets to pay attention, specific attention?
No, there, there are no units in the basement.
Okay.
It's a matter of a reconfiguration.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, my name is Faisal Sharif with Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of Joshua Fadden, we would like to go, uh, in record of support for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Destin Gardner, on behalf of Councilor Campbell's office. Um, we've been in communication with the local civic association, Project Right, and, uh, some of the residents and this project did not go through a community process, so in collaboration with this civic association, we'd like to ask the project to, uh, seek for a deferral.
Speak to the community process?
So I, our intent was, uh, community pro- in fact, we were advised by the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services that community process was not necessary. We did have our own volition, uh, leaflet all around the property about, uh, three-block radius and I wasn't touched with Councilor Campbell's office, uh, belatedly, admittedly. Uh, so we, again, being administrative matter, our, uh, direction we got from O and S was neighborhood meetings were not required.
But I'm assuming you'll continue to work with the community as, um, as you work on this, on these buildings, et cetera?
Absolutely. We have extensive process with the resident population of two-hundred-and-one units and we will continue, uh, with the community at large as well.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, um, approved, but make sure you continue to speak to the, to the community at large, too. Your motion carries. You're all set.
Calling next case, calling BOA eight-three-five-nine-four-eight, nine Selden Street. This, this is to convert a house of two apartments into three apartments, convert existing single apartment unit on the second and third floor into two apartment units. No work is planned for the existing first-floor apartment unit. Violation's Article sixty-five, section forty-one, insufficient parking, designs, access. Article sixty-five, section eight, a three-family is forbidden. An Article sixty-five, section nine, insufficient open space. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, my name is Gerard Georges from seventy-eight Blake Street. I'm here in support of the owner.
Good morning, Madam Chairman. Members of the Board, my name is Jasmine Coleman. I'm the owner, nine Selden Street, Boston oh-two-one-two-four.
Can you tell us what you're proposing, please? Or are you speaking on her behalf?
I'd like to speak on her behalf if possible.
Okay.
So, uh, the owner just recently purchased the home. It's a existing two-family, uh, two-apartment unit. The owner currently resides on the second unit, which, uh, comprises of the second floor and the third floor. That unit itself has roughly two thousand and some odd square feet and the additional square footage, the owner would like to propose adding a, uh, splitting up into two apartments, making the house a three-family home as opposed to a two-family home.
So tell us about the first-floor unit. How many square feet is that?
The first-floor unit currently has one thousand three hundred and eighty square feet.
Okay. And what's the proposal for the split? The second unit would be, how many square feet?
Nine hundred square feet.
Okay, and the third unit, the same?
The third unit would be one thousand seven hundred and seventy square feet.
One thousand seven hundred and seventy square feet?
Correct.
Okay. Um, let's see, three families forbidden. How about parking? Tell us about the parking.
So, uh, it wasn't clear when we, uh, submitted these drawings, but the current property has a two-car garage in the back plus additional space for two additional vehicles, possibly three if we need, uh, pave that area.
Where? Oh, in the backyard?
In the backyard, yes.
Hmm, then you, then you trigger open space issues, so.
Well, that's why I said, there's currently a garage that houses two.
Okay.
There's open, uh, lot space that houses two additional cars.
Okay.
Should there be a need for a, a third additional car, that would be-
Mr. Bazani, how are the plans?
The drawings are adequate. I, I do have a question. Is the work already done?
No, the work has been done. There's no dimensional changes to the exterior of the home. Uh, the only proposed work would be to convert a portion of the second floor to allow a stairway to go up to the third floor and use a portion of the second floor and the third floor as one unit and then the remainder of the second floor is the other unit.
And you're going to fully sprinkle the building?
It's currently, uh, hardwired for, uh-
No sprinkling?
No. Currently it's not intended to be fully sprinkled.
ISD may have another, another opinion on that, but, okay, the drawings are adequate.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, if I may just-
Hold on, hold on.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, my name is Faisal Sharif with Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of Udine Celestin, we'd like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Destin Gardner, on behalf of Council President Campbell's office. Uh, they've met with the Don Association and, uh, received their approval, so we'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA eight-five-nine-one-eight-three, thirty-two Wentworth Street. Councilor, these all together?
No.
So you're going to do these singly?
Yes.
Okay. Thirty-two Wentworth Street, sorry. This is to erect a new three-family dwelling on an existing vacant lot. Pro three off-street parking. Violation's Article sixty-five, section forty-two. Side yard with off-street parking driveway cannot be less than ten feet wide. Article sixty-five, section nine, the lot size to erect a three-family dwelling unit is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section nine, the lot width requirement is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section nine, lot frontage is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty-five, section nine, the height requirement is excessive of the number of stories. Article sixty-five, section nine, usable open space requirement is excessive. And Article sixty-five, section nine, the side yard setback requirement is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Attorney Derek Small. Business address of fifteen Broad Street, Boston, Mass. Oh-two-one oh-nine. With me today is Matt Mueller of Hugh Architects. We're the architect for the project. Madam Chair, today we are here seeking relief to erect a three-family dwelling with three parking spaces on a vacant lot. The zoning sub-district is three-F-six-thousand and the violations are as follows.
Zoning, uh, sorry, what's the lot size?
Three-F-six-thousand. Lot size is three thousand five hundred and seventy-one square feet. The lot width and frontage, the requirement is forty. We have thirty-five point seven. The FAR in this area is point four. We have point nine-two. The height, um, is at thirty-five feet. We're at thirty feet. Um, the number of stories is at two and a half, required and proposed. Uh, the side yard setback is ten feet and we have five point six feet. With regard to community process, Madam Chair, we-
Hold on. Uh, Mr. Small, tell us about the, um, num- the bedrooms?
Okay.
Number of bedrooms, the square feet of each unit and how the par- parking is going to work?
Matt Mueller will talk about that.
Uh, yes, uh, it's three bedrooms per unit, uh, one and a half bath.
And how many square feet are the, is each unit?
Each unit is approximately eleven hundred.
Okay. And is there any use, proposed use in the basement?
Uh, just mechanical storage.
Okay. And tell us about the parking.
Three parking spaces in the back, rear, rear of the lot.
Okay. And it looks like you have rear decks, two rear decks. How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
The drawings are adequate. The question comes about in terms of the parking, uh, that is the driveway. The drawing shows seven-foot driveway width on the edge of the property, from edge of the building to the property line. It can only work if you actually have an easement with your neighbor. Do you have an easement?
Not yet, but our owner-
We're working on that. We're working on it. We're in contract on that.
What does that mean? Is it-
We've started discussions about possible easement, yes.
But in the event that it doesn't, it doesn't mature, what's, what's, what's plan B?
Um, then we will come back, um, probably pursue without the parking.
I'm sorry?
Pursue it without the parking if it doesn't work with an easement.
Okay.
There isn't enough room between the lot line and the proposed building for a driveway that's, uh, sufficient width? Or you can't redesign the building?
Uh, we could push the building over.
Yeah.
Um, but I think the owner is confident we can get the easement because she knows the neighbor and that's why we left it there.
Okay.
Well, this is a little bit funny, uh, because the project as presented is dependent on an easement that doesn't exist. And so the question comes about, uh, would it benefit everybody to defer this until you got the easement or not easement?
Or possibly we could hold until, signature until the, we have evidence of the easement?
No, but if we hold it for signature, that means then we then have to, let's say they don't get the easement, then we have to undo something.
True. Or, um, yep, or they need, or you, they could come back to move, yeah, would mean that-
They'd have to redesign the building.
They'd have to redesign the building. Okay. Um, so how long do you think this conversation's going to take?
Uh, probably about a month.
Okay. May I have a motion for deferral?
Motion to defer.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
October thirtieth.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Yes. For ten-thirty? I'm going to call it-
Stay right there.
You have ten-thirty deferrals or withdrawals for ten-thirty? Councilor, address, please.
Laurence Scatino, two-forty-five Sumner Street. Um, the address we're looking to defer is eighteen Everett Street. Um, at this point, we're looking for a-
Got to stop you there for a second. You've got to call in for the record. BOA eight-two-five-four-seven-nine-eighteen Everett Street. You can go ahead.
At this point, we're looking for a shot deferral to, um, continue discussions with the BPDA.
May I have a motion for the deferral?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
September eleventh, two-shot?
Um, possibly a little longer.
Then we'd be into both definitely, September twenty-fifth. We, I guess we can try the twenty-seventh.
Thank you.
Twenty-five, eleven-thirty. Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals? Hearing them, we'll go back to the nine-thirty cases.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay. Calling BOA eight-five-nine-one-nine-nine-fifty-nine Blake Street. This is applicant, is building a new single-family home. Violation's Article sixty-nine, section thirty, the driveway access width is less than ten feet. Article sixty-nine, section nine, insufficient front yard setback. Article sixty-nine, section nine, insufficient rear yard setback. Article sixty-nine, section nine, insufficient lot size. Article sixty-nine, section nine, insufficient lot width. Article sixty-nine, section nine, insufficient lot with frontage. Article sixty-nine, section nine, excessive FAR. Article sixty-nine, section nine, insufficient side yard. And Article sixty-nine, section nine, insufficient usable open space, free of a motor vehicle maneuvering area. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Attorney Derek Small. Business address of fifteen Broad Street, Boston, Mass. Oh-two-one oh-nine. Here with me is Matt Mueller, who's the architect for the project for Hugh Architects. Um, Madam Chair, today we are here seeking relief to erect a one-family dwelling on a vacant lot with two parking spaces. The zoning sub-district is two-F-five-thousand and the violations are as follows. Lot area required is five thousand. We have two thousand nine hundred and forty-one. The front, front yard setback is twenty feet. We have ten. The rear yard is forty. We have twenty-three. Lot width is thirty-five and we are at thirty-five. No, excuse me, lot width requirement is fifty. We have thirty-five. FAR is point five and we're proposing point seven-five on the FAR.
Wait here, what is-
Side yard is ten, ten feet. We're proposing six point five. And the open space for the project requirement is seventeen fifty and we're coming in at ten forty-six. With regard to community process, Madam Chair, for the record, I'd just like to say, you know, someone once said that one of the hardest things to do in the city of Boston is to put a one-family in a one- or two-family zone. This has been no exception. We have had over five-
This, that, that saying came from a previous chair of this board and we, we recognize that.
And, and it is tough. For one family on a vacant lot, we've had over five community meetings with regard to this project. Um, there are, there are some neighbors here who are opposed to it.
So tell us, tell us, please, um, how, what's the square foot of this unit?
I'll let Matt talk about this.
Uh, approximately two thousand square feet.
Two thousand square feet and it looks like it's a use in the basement?
Yes, finished basement.
For recreation?
Yes.
But no absolute living space?
That's right.
Um, first floor, um, and this is a two-bedroom, is it?
Yes.
Okay. And, um, there's no, and it's, it's an attic. There's no roof up there.
That's correct.
And the parking, again, is in the rear yard and, um, you have adequate room this time?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and how are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Brian Flynn with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, representing Hyde Park. Uh, we want to go on record in support of this proposal. Uh, there were several butters' meetings held um, and we feel that it is a reasonable project. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Walter Applewhite, um, Council McCarthy's office. We'd like to go on record in support. Um, the council supports single-family owners, home, home, homeownership opportunities, as you know. So we'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Hey, I think you heard me at the beginning. Put your name and address on the record.
Good morning, Madam Chairman.
Hold on, hold on. And please try and make sure you're giving me new information, okay? If somebody has already stated your concern, put your name and address on the record, okay? So new information, each one of you. Go ahead.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chairman. All members, my name is Selvin McPherson and I live at sixty Blake Street and, and the member, and the people in the community are in opposition of this construction.
Okay, thank you.
My name is George Hano. I live at one oh one Ralph Fifth Road.
I'm sorry, your address?
One oh one Ralph Fifth Road. The only thing that I want to bring new to the attention, I've been living in this house for twenty years and I don't know how Ralph Fifth Road for this new apartment came up with an address because it was nothing but a garage there for back, back of Blake Street. I don't know how that become an address and I've been there ten years. That's the part I do not understand at all.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Janie Porter Nichols. I live at fifty-seven Blake Street and I'm not a, I'm not in for supporting this and like he said, um, I've lived there for twenty years and I know the previous owners that lived there before and this was not, there was no address for sixty-one Blake Street and I'm not for it. I'm not in support of it.
Okay, did you suppose to any construction on that site or what is your opposition based on?
I don't want it in my neighborhood and I don't want the construction on both sides. Thank you.
My name is Arvina Jackson. I live at one oh one Radcliffe Road. I'm also live in front, in the back of fifty-nine Blake Street where they want to build two and I'm not supporting them building the construction.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, Charles Johnson, forty-three Tylston, directly across the street. I've been-
Your address again, forty-three?
Forty-three Tylston, T-I-L-E-S-T-O-N. I have been there for over thirty years. Uh, as stated, it was a garage. It was torn down. They subdivided and now they'd like to put a two-family home there. On that side of the street, all the way up the street, there are single families.
So you know we are talking about Blake Street, right?
No, I was, um, I'm, I'm thinking of Radcliffe, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, so we'll wait for you and, and then you can speak again on Radcliffe, okay? Anybody else? Because I noticed there was a couple here from one oh one Radcliffe. Uh, just for the record, this is, this is, we're talking about Blake Street.
That's correct. It's in this one-family dwelling.
And this is a single-family dwelling. Um, so just clarification. Um, this was a, a pre, pre-existing lot. It's not a new subdivision or anything-
That's correct.
That created the lot.
That's correct.
Okay. So, um, now the, the, for the residents who lived at Radcliffe Road, we're, we're going to just hold your, um, your opinion for the other case, but, because I think that's what you're, you were here to speak about is number ninety-one Radcliffe? Clarify for us, please?
Okay, we live at one-oh-one Radcliffe, but they're building on the left of us, and they're building on the back of us. So we're, we're adjacent to both of the projects.
So you're opposed, so this is also in relation to Blake?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, so given that information, uh, did you want to speak at all, Mr., Mrs. Small?
Yes, Madam Chair, um, as I was saying earlier, you know, it's a vacant lot. A one-family is probably the least intrusive thing that can be put on a lot. And, uh, we think that a one-family along with the Mayor's Office and the City Council think is a reasonable project. I'm just into that.
Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with, um, BPLV design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, uh, you're all set on this project.
Case calling BOA eight-five-nine-one-eight-five-two-to-four Crossman Street. This is a new three-family with three off-street parking, violation Article sixty, Section nine insufficient lot size, Article sixty, Section nine insufficient lot width, Article sixty insufficient lot frontage, Article sixty, Section nine insufficient front yard setback, Article sixty, Section nine number of allowed stories has been exceeded, Article sixty, Section nine excessive FAR, Article sixty, Section nine insufficient usable open space, Article sixty, Section nine insufficient rear yard setback, and Article sixty, Section eight, use is forbidden. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, again, Madam Chair, Attorney Derek Small, fifteen Broad Street, Boston, Mass., oh-two-one-oh-nine. With me today is Matt Mueller, architect for the project. Madam Chair, before we begin, I'd just like to set the record straight and clarify. We are here seeking relief for a two-family dwelling with parking, and out of three, um, that is the result of, um, having meetings with the West Sheldon Neighborhood Association, and we went back to them and proposed a two, and we also had in the Butters' meeting, um, with regard to reducing it to a two.
So what does that do for your violations, Mr. Small?
I'll let Matt answer.
What does it do for your zoning violations, now that it's down to a two-family?
Nothing.
Nothing? So what's this, what's the zoning district here?
So I'll go through it. Um, so again, we're here seeking relief for the erection of a two-family dwelling on a vacant lot, um, with three parking spaces. The zoning sub-district is one F, six thousand. And the violations are as follows. Lot area is six thousand, we have four thousand eight hundred and thirty. Lot width is, requirement is sixty feet, we have forty-five and a half. Front yard setback is twenty, we have eleven. The height is thirty-five, we're coming in at thirty-five and a half, and two and a half stories. The FAR requirement for this area, Madam Chair, is point six, we're coming in at point nine. Rear yard setback is forty feet, we have thirty-five point three. And the open space for the project would be, requirement would be fifteen hundred, we have thirteen seventy. With regard to, um, the community process, um, we had in the Butters' meeting sponsored by Neighborhood Services. Uh, we also met with the West Sheldon Neighborhood Association. At the very first meeting, it was proposed for a three-family.
The, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services can speak to that.
Okay.
Can you tell us again, so there is, again, uh, use in the basement? The mechanical, uh, and storage place is, is separated because that's going to have only rear access? Is that what it is?
That's right.
Okay. And there's bedrooms in the basement? There's a bedroom in the basement? Explain, um, what, is that above grade? What is it?
Um, it's, it has an emergency escape window, so it's partially above grade.
Okay, and what's the floor-to-ceiling height in there?
Uh, these would be, uh, seven, uh, I think, eight, um, eight and a half.
Okay.
I'm sorry, eight feet in the basement.
Eight feet in the basement? And, um, so the first, um, the first unit is, um, a three-bedroom?
Yes. Both units are three-bedroom.
And the second unit is also a three-bedroom, right?
That's correct.
Oh, so this goes up into the attic? How are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
The drawings are adequate. Um, question that I would raise, though, is, when you take a look at the site plan, it says that you only have six foot six inches from the stair, exterior stair to the property line. How does that work? That doesn't work the parking, or the driveway.
The driveway's on the other side, Mr. Bizani, of the building. It says concrete driveway, ten feet.
Okay, thank you. That's for management, you have high security.
Yes, that's true, that's true. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of Ruth Neece, Celestine, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Walter?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Walter Applewhite, Council McCarthy's office. Um, we can't support it at this time, there just seems to be some confusion as to what was presented, so...
Okay. Thank you.
George Richardson, the owner of thirty-five Violet, um, on the West Sheldon Street Committee, um, when this was initially brought to us, it was stated that it was a one-family. Then when we had a meeting with the gentleman, it became a three-family. Uh, we requested that it be a two, but we see that it's on the paper as advertised as three. We're very confused and concerned about how this is gonna be presented.
So he just presented it, that, that he is presenting a two-family, not a three-family?
I realize that.
Yes.
I'm just saying that it just adds to the confusion of what's going on. It was a one, then it was a three, then it was a two, so we're concerned.
So this is decision point, and it's a two-family, okay?
That's correct.
And, um, are you opposed to a two-family?
Not opposed to a two-family, just that it's clear that it's done as it's presented.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good ma, good morning, Madam Chair. Uh, my name is Barbara Critchell, and I'm a member of the West Sheldon Street and Vicinity Neighborhood Association. And again, also too, there was a lot of confusion about this development. I would like to have him come back and clarify it with the Neighborhood Association.
Okay. Are you opposed to the two-family? From, from the conversations at the community meeting?
As it is right now, because we couldn't hear everything?
Yeah.
And our Neighborhood Association would like to hear this.
Okay.
My name's Jennifer Brock, and I live at twenty-three Crossman Street. And speaking to the neighbors, my neighbors on twenty-three on Crossman Street, they're not clear as to what this is, so I'm listening to what he's, what is being presented here. I am opposed right now of it, because the rest of my neighborhood is not here to hear what Mr. Small is, um, or what Mr. Small is saying. So I'm at the moment opposed of this.
The group opposed to the three-family?
Yes, my street did definitely oppose to the three. I went to every, um, body on that street, rang doorbells. Everybody did not get a flyer. They would state it that they got a flyer, that they were fired out. I went to the, my street's very small. Went to the street, and nobody got a flyer. I didn't get this flyer in my own, um, mailbox. So they're not aware of what's going on, including the people that sold the property that live at six-ten.
Okay.
Are you, are you in favor?
No, go ahead.
Of a two-family?
Are you in favor of a two-family?
I am in favor of a two-family, but again, for my street to have some kind of clarification, because if some did not get this, they don't even know if this meeting is going on today.
Okay.
Counselor, has the two-family been submitted?
Yes, it has.
Yeah, so we do have it.
That's what, all these violations that you were speaking to was in reference to the two-family. Okay, uh, given that information, because I'm sure that you will continue conversation with the Butters?
Without doubt. We, we don't have a problem. As I said, the original was for three. As a result of the community meetings with West Sheldon and the Butters' meeting, we reduced it to a two. At last, at both those meetings, we presented as a two. It was never proposed as a one. And to be clear about that as well.
Make a motion to approve as a two-family, and, um, make strict, um, recommendation that you work closely with this neighborhood, and you flyer everybody, and you make sure everybody knows what's going on, and that they have a copy of the plans and all that fun.
And, and this would be with design review?
With design review, correct.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set. Good luck.
Calling my next case, calling BOA eight-five-nine-two-zero-zero-ninety-one Radcliffe Road.
Do you want to be, we're gonna request a deferral on this, yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, for ninety-one Radcliffe Road, we're requesting a deferral. We've been advised by the Mayor's Office to request a deferral, to go back, to present it as a one, which we will do.
This was the hard part, but sitting in that seat for a long time. So may I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral. And we're gonna do ten-thirty. I'm sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date please?
Date will be October thirtieth, at eleven-thirty.
Okay.
Okay, did, did people who are, did, did the residents who are here in opposition hear that? Radcliffe has been postponed to October thirtieth. Okay?
Madam Chair, I'm gonna go back to one case.
Alright, thank you, Madam Chair, have a good day.
That I called earlier. Calling BOA eight-five-four-one-nine-one, thirty-nine Rossiter Road, Rossiter Street, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, did, were they still taking deferral requests? I'm sorry.
I'll do it after this case.
Okay.
This is to renovate a two-unit residential building to become a three-unit residential building. Violation Article sixty-five, Section forty-one, minimum space size is insufficient. Article sixty-five, Section eight, a three-F use is forbidden in the two-F, six-thousand district. And Article sixty-five, Section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Steven Suda, thirty-nine Rossiter Street, LOC, thirty-nine Rossiter Street, Dorchester, Mass.
Tell us what's being proposed?
Being proposed is a change of occupancy to three units. Uh, the previous owners did occupy it as a three-family for as long as they lived there. When we walked through the property, there was three kitchens, the third floor was occupied separately. There was bathrooms up there as well, so we decided that we wanted to keep it the way it was. We're proposing to kick the foundation out in the back, the, um, the retaining wall, about another nine, nine to ten feet, it's gonna allow a three-and-a-half parking spaces. There, we shortened the decks from ten-by-twenty to ten-by-twelve to allow more space in the backyard as well. We're not going to add any, any, um, boomers or anything like that, keeping the existing structure exactly the same, just trying to keep the property the way it was as we found it, and utilize it as such.
Okay. So, um, this is a three-family?
Um, I believe it's, it's, I think it's three, it's a two-F, uh, five-thousand, I believe.
Has it been taxed as a three-family?
No, it has not. We wanted to get that changed, yes. There was only two meters on there as well.
Interesting. Um, how are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
The drawings are adequate. Um, could you go over the parking? Because parking, there are four spaces, but they can't move that, correct?
Yes, so on the driveway, it goes out, there's a small sliver that fits the car just, just through there, and in the back, it was only about spot for one, so that's why, this, that's the only way to get it. Um, so that's why we decided to kick the retaining wall out back farther to the lot line, in the back, to increase the width.
Any other questions from the board? Oh, sorry, Bob, I didn't see you.
Madam Chair, lady, and members of the board, Bob D'Amico, BTD, um, looking at the plans, four spaces doesn't work.
Uh, it's too small, confined.
Um, I think three is the most you can fit in that, that space.
So, which, which space would you knock out?
Um, they were, they were like, sort of, it was kind of disorganized, it was like...
Would you propose angle parking?
Yeah, it would have to be angle parking, but you could fit three, but not four.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of Alex Valdez, I'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve with, um, you know, transportation to approve the parking plan. Other than that, I'll make a straight approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, with that proviso, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
Counselor, are you talking about ten-thirties, or?
Ten-thirties.
Alright, address for?
Fifty-eight Byron Street.
I'm sorry?
Fifty-eight Byron Street.
For the record, calling BOA eight-zero-three-seven-five-five-fifty-eight Byron Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano, an address of fifteen Broad Street. We're seeking a deferral today to continue to work with the Butters and neighbors on this project.
Motion for deferral.
Is there, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The, the date please?
We are now into October tenth, uh, October thirtieth.
Thank you very much.
At eleven-thirty.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go back to the nine-thirties. Calling the next case, calling BOA eight-two-four-one-two-four, twenty-two to twenty-four Adelaide Street. This is a change from a two-family to a three-family caretaker's apartment by constructing an addition of accessible rear entry and attached garage, and renovate the first-floor unit for accessibility, replace back porches and egress stairs. The violation is Article fifty-five, Section nine, the lot area for additional dwelling units is sufficient. Article fifty-five, Section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-five, Section nine, usable open space is insufficient. Article fifty-five, Section nine, side yard is insufficient. Article fifty-five, Section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. And then Article fifty-five, Section fifty-five dash forty, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Chris Ho, twenty-two Adelaide Street, to make a claim. Um, I'm, along with my wife, owner of this property for twenty-five years. These are renovations we never planned to make, but I had an accident a year and a half ago, took ours, we used a wheelchair, and in order to get into this first-floor apartment, we need to do these, um, uh, make these changes. In particular, um, the need for, we need to, to replace the, the three-story porch where that needed to be done. And we're just on the first floor, creating an enclosed space, so that I can go from my vehicle into the, uh, into our new accessible apartment, without dealing with New England weather.
So just hold on a minute, can, let me just see if I can understand, so are you changing the occupancy from a two to a three-family dwelling?
Yes, it was recommended by people in the special services, as well as our friends, because I mainly have care, live in caretakers, and that, have that be a legal third floor. It's currently, um, an in-law apartment, um, that's unoccupied, um, and we're not planning to make any changes to that apartment, other than to do the safety changes, which Sarah Gardner can explain, Mike.
How large is this caretaker's apartment?
How large is it? It's a one-bedroom apartment, and it is approximately, um, six-hundred square feet.
Okay. And so, um, just spend a minute looking at the plans. How are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
The drawings are adequate, it fully addresses accessibility issues.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Hi, everyone. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Will Poff Webster here with City Councilman O'Malley's office. We'd like to go on record in support. There was a very supportive Butters meeting for this project that I attended. The JP Neighborhood Council was in support. And personally, I'm also an Butter of the project and in support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Megan Camello from Councilor Savvy Georgia's office. We'd like to echo the thoughts before, and we'd like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan. Vice City Councilor Lush Michael Flaherty. Council would go on record in support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Face Shree with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We're also in support. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? So, your main entry point is to the garage, to the, to the, to the unit?
Yes.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, members of the board, as a 51-year resident of this neighborhood, I'd like to make a motion to grant a relief request.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 827-476, 14 to 16 Alberta Street. This is a demo exist, demo an existing two-family on existing lot and erect a two-family dwelling on the same lot. Violation Article 56, Section 7, two-family dwelling unit is a forbidden use. Article 56, Section 8, lot size to erect a dwelling unit is insufficient. Article 56, Section 8, the minimum lot width requirement is insufficient. Article 56, Section 8, lot frontage is insufficient. Article 56, Section 8, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 56, Section 8, usable open space is insufficient. Article 56, Section 8, the front yard setback is insufficient. Article 56, Section 8, the side yard setback is insufficient. And Article 56, Section 8, the rear yard setback is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Robert Corley, 94 Soil Road, West Roxbury, Mass.
Tell us what you're proposing.
This is an existing two-family home that we're going to demolish and rebuild a new two-family home in its place with parking underneath for four spots. All of the violations listed are existing with the existing two-family?
Parking underneath.
We're putting parking underneath the two-family.
So, it's not in the basement? I haven't, how does it look, Mr. Bizani? Is it, it's not a garage?
No, it's full and parked.
Drive underneath, the two, park right underneath, yep.
Okay, go ahead. This is now quite a number of violations. So, can you speak to them, please?
Sure. All of the violations that are currently listed exist with the existing two-family, so-
That is an existing problem, an existing non-
Right, so in demolishing it, obviously, the two-family dwelling is required-
So, you're not using the same footprint, are you?
No, we're, we're actually making the footprint a little bit wider, and we're making it a little bit shorter in depth. But it's relatively the same footprint. And I can explain each of the violations if you'd like. But it's an existing two-family, so when you tear down one in a single-family zone, any single-family zone in West Roxbury, you have to get permission to build it back. So, that's the first violation. The second is the lot size, which we're not changing, obviously. The next is the, the lot width and the lot frontage. Those are also things that we're not changing. They're there. They're existing. And violations for the current two-family. The floor area ratio, we are increasing, so the, the actual units are getting larger from .57 to .8. But I will point out that the actual footprint of the building is slightly smaller from the front and the rear. So, the proposed building actually, without the enclosed former porches, is not bigger than the other property, the property we're demolishing. Next is on the violations that are to the north side, which is the right side of the property. That's going to remain 10, within the 10-feet setback, so there's no violation there. On the front, we're improving the majority of the setback. The existing was approximately 5.7 feet from the street. This is a one-way street, very narrow street. And we're improving that condition. We're actually pushing the property back to about 9.3 off the street, except for the egress porch, which will be 4.3 off the street. Next to the left, or the south of the property, we're improving the front corner condition from 4.9 to 4.7. I'm, I'm sorry, we're, we're moving it the other way, actually. We're not improving it from 4.9 to 4.7. And from 3.7 to 3.4 in the back corner, just a matter of inches on the left side. And then last, and then lastly, to the rear, the existing conditions are 10.7 and 8.6 in the corners. The proposed building will be 8.3 in one corner, and the opposite corner will be 10.6. And the new egress porch will be 6.4 from the rear lot. So, the building as it was is demolished. This new proposed building is, is a little bit wider and a little bit less in-depth going to the rear lot.
Mr. Bizani, what are your plans?
The drawings are adequate. The question terms about is what they're proposing is a 16-foot curb height at the front. What's the maximum allowed for?
12. 12. 12 foot's max.
So, there would be some issues with that. And then the other question is, whether or not the building is compatible enough with the neighborhood. I noticed that it was actually designed by an engineer. Is that on purpose or?
No, the plan was stamped by an engineer, but it was designed by an architect. I'm not exactly sure about that part.
Who's the architect?
An architect designed something that had to stand by an engineer.
Who's the architect?
Actually, I don't know the name of the architect on this particular plan. I apologize.
Is this a, it's not modular?
It's not modular, no.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jack Duggan, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Just like to go on record in support. We held in the Butters meeting back in May, and Rob addressed some of the concerns of the neighbors. He then went to the Neighborhood Council in, in June and received full support from them, so we'd just like to echo that support. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, if I would, or Madam Chair, I have three letters of support from the Butters.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Bill McGarco, City Councilman O'Malley. The council would also like to go on record in support and echo the Mayor's office. Madam Chairman, members of the board, Paul Sullivan. Vice City Councilor Lush Michael Flaherty. Echoing the sentiments of the Mayor's office. Council would go on record in support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Megan Camello from Councilor Savvy Georgia's office. The council would like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to grant the relief requested with the following proviso: that the curb height be in accordance with BPDA crossing transportation standards, and B, that BPDA have very aggressive design review to ensure protectuality in this project. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Sir, do you want to submit those letters?
Yes, please.
The board is taking a break, and we will resume at 11:35.
Thank you.
This meeting is being livestreamed. We're still on the cases scheduled for 9:30, so it's a long agenda. Let me remind you that if you're here to speak in support or in opposition to the project, please put your name and address on the record and give us new information. If somebody has already repeated your concern or the basis for your support, just put your name and address on the record. Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Calling the next case for 9:30, BOA 829-236, 41 to 47 Corinth Street. This is change occupancy to add a tattoo shop, adding walls, and it's enhancing to the current layout. Work being done is in a vacant space at 4251 Washington Street. Violation is Article 67, Section 11, tattoo shop is a conditional use. Name and address for the record, please.
41 Newton Street, Malden, Mass, 02148.
And good morning, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. My name is Scott Holmes, and I'm at 50 Main Street in Charleston, Mass. I'm sorry.
So, um, so tell us, I'm a little confused that the address is 41 to 47 Corinth Street, and it's, the work is being done as, at a Washington Street address?
Yes, 41, I assume, 4147 is Corinth Street. The main entrance to the second floor would be 4251 Washington Street.
And what's the ground floor business?
It's a pizza taqueria, and this is the vacant property upstairs that was used formerly, from what I can understand, to be a hair salon at some point in time. Mr. Sin's been, actually, fell in love with the place with paying rent since January, hoping that we could get the board's approval for him to open up a studio. We have done the extensive community work, and I'm proud to say that Mr. Sin went to the farmer's market on repeated weekends and solicited people and talked to people, and we submitted into the board's minutes today 155 signatures of support for his business. We did the community hearing. There was no opposition. We just spent-
So, tell us about the space. How many square feet is it?
1,274 square feet. It is in disrepair, for lack of a better word, right now.
And how many, how many artists will be in that space?
Five total, according to the message.
Five artists, okay.
This will be, excuse me, this will be by appointment only, and the, the, one good thing about, or many good things, but one of the noteworthy things about a tattoo studio is it's often off-hours, meaning that people come in after work to have it done, so it won't further burden any parking in the Rosendale Square area.
How late will the business run, then?
Till 10 o'clock.
Actually, it'll be around 10.
I'm sorry?
Till around 8.
Eight?
Sorry, around 8?
8:00 PM, and how many nights a week will that go? Will that be?
It should be open every day, but on weekends, I plan on closing earlier. Like, on a Sunday, we'll probably close around 5 or 6.
Okay.
Respectful of the Rosendale Square Business District, so there won't be any neon signs. It won't be any way that it's going to be offensive. It, it's a vibrant, wonderful area, and this is just hopeful to be another component to it.
Especially since I live there, so, okay.
You got a tattoo?
So, how are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
I know where to go. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Joe Carpenter, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support of this project, as I did receive numerous letters of support from the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval, BPDA design review for signed, Jones.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling the last two cases at 9:30, calling BOA 827-043-52 Birchwood Street. There's a companion case, BOA 827-045-54 Birchwood Street. This is 452, there's erect a single-family dwelling, one-car garage on an existing vacant lot. Violation is Article 56, Section 8, lot width required is insufficient. Article 56, Section 8, lot frontage required is insufficient. This is 454 Birchwood Street. This is a demo of an existing home at 54 Birchwood and erect a single-family dwelling with one-car garage. Violation is Article 56, Section 8, lot width required is insufficient. And Article 56, Section 8, lot frontage required is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Secretary of the Board. My name is Richard Vetstein, attorney out of Framingham, Massachusetts, 945 Concord Street.
Dave Scanlon from-
Chesapeake, Mass.
William Moore from Wolfville, Mass.
So, so what were the violations, again?
Lot violations were lot width and frontage.
Okay, so that's just because the lot's plotted as it's plotted?
Correct. This is a-
Okay, so these are two single-family homes that you're proposing on that. How are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jack Duggan, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd just like to go on record in support. We held in a Butters meeting back in June. That was well-attended. They then went to the Neighborhood Council in late June and received full support from them. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Megan Camello from Councilor Savvy Georgia's office. The council would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, Paul Sullivan. Vice City Councilor Lush Michael Flaherty. Council would go on record in support.
Madam Chairman, members of the board. Bill McGarco, City Councilman O'Malley. The council would also like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with continued BPDA design review.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
9:30 hearings?
Oh, wait, was it one, 9:30 was at Amory Street?
Which one?
Amory Street?
Oh, she said we went back to it.
You never went back to it?
No, we went back to Rossiter Street.
Yeah, there was a, another Amory Street one?
10:30 hearings, I'm going to call deferrals or withdrawals one more time. Counselor, address, please.
It's 1225 Center, 1225-1229 Center Street in West Roxbury.
That's 11:30? Okay. Yeah, actually-
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. We're there now anyway, so we'll do 11:30s.
Thank you for that.
I'm sorry, the address again?
It's 1225-1229 Center, and also 1231 and 1231B.
For the record, calling BOA 695-061, 1225-1229 Center. Companion case, BOA 695-062, 1231A to 1231B Center Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney John Pulgin, 10 Forbes Road in Train Trail.
What are you requesting?
We're requesting a deferral on this. We've been working with an institutional Butter who is directly, this is directly across from the Hebrew Rehab Building on Center Street. It used to be a small gas station that has since closed.
Is it within?
Yeah, and we're working with the Sophia Snow House Group on some possible transaction. So, through the Mayor's Office and through Council O'Malley's office, they requested that we just continue that dialogue and go forward.
How long do you think you need?
Very soon, I think if, I don't know if the October 16th date is available, we'll hopefully wrap it up by then.
No, we'll be able to get to the 30th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
The 30th of October.
October 30th. Thank you very much.
Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 11:30? Address, please.
500 East Broadway.
For the record, calling BOA 787-634-500 to 502A, East Broadway. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is James Christopher. I'm one of the principals of RCALLC with a project architect, with a business address of 415 upon Sedab. We're requesting a deferral so we can meet with the community. My wife had a baby this summer, so I was on paternity, even-
Congratulations.
Wasn't able to finish the drawings. So, we'd like to wrap them up and sit with the Butters to try to resolve some outstanding issues.
Hey, may I have a motion, please?
Motion for-
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
October 30th.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 11:30? During the number of the first case for 10:30, calling BOA 848-571, 53 Lexington Street. This is installing rack decks and a roof deck. Violation is Article 9, Section 1, accessory use is conditional. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient rear yard setback. Article 53, Section 52, roof structure restrictions. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney Larian Spatino from Richard Lindsay's office, 245 Sumner Street, West Boston, Massachusetts. Today, we're here, um, just to request a rear and roof decks, that should read. Um, the roof deck will be only for Unit 3, these are meant to be homeownership, and as a result of adding the roof deck, um, the rear decks also had to be extended to, um, extend a little bit further than they currently do off the building, to meet the building code requirements. This building is remaining a three-unit building, there'll be no changes in the occupancy, and it's, um, a complete gut renovation, adding life safety, sprinklers, and the such.
And how will the roof deck be accessed?
Here are the spirals, Jack.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Rise is adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Jesus Garcia with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, eh, during the community process, the project had the support from the Butters, and also from the Civic Association, they would like to go on record in support.
For the record, I also have a letter of support from the Eagle Hill Civic Association.
Yeah, Chair, members of the board, Julia, the City Councilwoman, Lydia Edwards' office, she wishes to go on record in support, this simply added a group deck, and it did get approved by the Eagle Hill Association.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval, BPDA design review.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set.
Calling BOA 826-526-57-SARATOGA STREET. This is demolishing existing structure, erect a four-story building with nine residential units, nine parking spaces, and three roof decks. The violation is Article 53, Section 8, a multifamily dwelling is forbidden, Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive, Article 53, Section 9, the height is excessive, Article 53, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient, Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient, Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Drago with Drago and Tuscano with an address of 15 Broad Street, uh, representing Garrett Hogan, he's the developer, uh, for 57 Saratoga Street, and also Tim Johnson, the architect on the project. Um, as was mentioned, we're proposing to raise an existing building, it's a two-unit structure, it's in poor structural condition now, uh, and erect a four-story residential, uh, nine-unit, nine-parking space condo development on the site. Um, the particular lot size is 5,000 square feet, um, and just to go over the layout, these are all two-bedroom, two-bath units with decks. Uh, the first floor would house all of the parking spaces, so they'd all be inside, uh, nine parking spaces, lobby elevator and trash room dedicated for the, uh, building. Uh, second floor, third floor, and fourth floor, all roughly between 1,000 and 1,100 square foot, two-bedroom, two-bath units. Um, the violations, as was mentioned, uh, one has been removed, we worked to pull the building in on the side, so the side yard violation has been removed, we meet the five-foot setback requirement. Um, it is a 2F district, so, uh, although they're multifamily up and down this corridor, uh, we are proposing nine units. Uh, FAR, which is allowable under the code, is .8, we're at 2.4. Um, height, although it's allowable, is 35, uh, we're not far off at 39 feet 6 inches. Rear yard is 30, we're at 5, and we do have one-for-one parking at 9, but 15.75 would be required under the code. During this process, we worked diligently to change the design, uh, making this look historic, using brick, um, uh, bump outs on the front, uh, all wrought iron decking on the side, as we worked with Eagle Hill, we did get the Eagle Hill Civic Association's, um, support on this project, and we also have included about 12 letters of a Butter support as well. Um, I can pause now and answer any questions the board may have.
Yes, uh, can you speak to all these violations, um, specifically into all these violations? What's required, what's being proposed?
Okay, um, I thought I mentioned, uh, it's a 2F district, so multifamily residential, um, is seek, we would have seek a variance for that. Uh, FAR, uh, .8, we're at 2.4. Uh, the height restriction of two-and-a-half stories, 35 feet, we're at four stories, 39 feet. Rare setback, uh, 30 feet required, we're at 5. Uh, and off-street parking, although we have the one-for-one, at 15.75 is what's required.
Tell us about the, um, are you meeting the loading requirement?
I'm sorry, yes, that was-
You are?
We are, yeah.
Okay. Tell us about the units, the uni, the number of bedrooms and the unit sizes.
They're all two-bedroom, two-bath units, and they're all similarly, similar in size, roughly 1,000, uh, to 1,137 square foot units.
And the roof deck?
Um, so, uh, is there, yeah, dedicated, so there's three exclusive roof deck, uh, on the top with small, uh, walkout headhouse.
And so how are they accessed?
I'm sorry?
How are they accessed?
Do you want to touch on that, Tim? Uh, the roof decks, Madam Chair? Uh, the roof decks are dedicated to each unit via a straight-run stair and headhouse.
Okay, and headhouse?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Rise is adequate.
Any questions from the board?
So, there's three headhouses, one, one for each of the, uh, plus the elevator headhouse.
Yes, Mr. Eric.
Um, uh, I'm sure it's Jeff, the BPDA recommendation is the denial, uh, concern of identity and rear yard, can you speak to that?
Uh, I think it's self-explanatory. Council Drago and myself have already talked about it offline, and, yeah, I understand that people are in support of it, but, um, Terry, I've been building the boards, and I was just successful, not mine.
Okay, uh, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Jesus Garcia with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we would like to speak on record in support for this project, the project received also the support from the Civic Association. Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chair, members of the board, the City Councilwoman, Lydia Edwards' office, the initial, uh, concern at the, uh, at the beginning of the process-
Judy, can you please speak into the mic, so I can hear you? Thank you.
The initial concern at the beginning of the process was the parking issue, however, they seem to have that resolved, they do meet the requirements, and they could, and they have the Eagle Hill support, and well as the Butters, so the council wishes to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody else to speak in support? Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Yes, I live at 46 Saratoga Street, and they didn't have-
What is, what is your name, please?
My name is Celia Plagenza.
Okay.
And, um, I didn't know about the, the Butters' meeting, they only had one during Memorial Day weekend, and then they had an Eagle Hill meeting I went to in June, and I don't know in July if they approved it, uh-
So what-
That's what happened, my husband called today, the Mayor's Office, and found out it was approved, and we asked about the parking and the height restriction. The Saratoga Street is all residential units, and the parking, they're saying, is deeded, deeded, like we had, uh, at 43 Saratoga Street, there was a degravitated house, and it got dilat, you know, they had it built like about three years ago-
Mm-hmm.
-and they had a structural damage next door, that they didn't even fix. And the, the, they have parking there, and they had to pay for parking, so they still got parking in the street. Plus the tunnel, going into the tunnel, they're gonna reconfigureate all that, and it's gonna be a disaster.
Okay, so your concern is about the traffic?
Right, and they didn't have, right, and they didn't have enough, uh, meetings on it, because I didn't know about, a last meeting I heard they had on, uh, Social Center, rather than Eagle Hill at High School, everything was in the summer, and it seems like it was, like I said, Memorial Day weekend, July 4th weekend, and I said, why is that? And people don't know about it. We had other neighbors that wanted to come, but I mean, they didn't know about even this.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm against it.
Okay, thank you. So we've heard concerns about parking, and the meeting, and the meeting location, and the traffic, I was, uh, you're, you're all set, can, I'm, I was just summarizing for the next few people in line, so they could give me some new information.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
They should really postpone it or something.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name's Carlo Guzman, 51 Saratoga Street. Uh, we would like to ask to postpone the meeting so that other Butters may be able to come and listen to what's being said. Um, as mentioned previously, we've only gone to a few meetings that haven't been flyer for, um, so we would like to ask to postpone to a later date.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak in opposition?
Hello, uh, my name is Eduardo Guzman, and I'm living in 51 Saratoga, and I'm here, um, to see if we're able to postpone this meeting, which not everyone here, as you see, we only three people here, and I own 51 Saratoga Street, and I please ask, can you, uh, if we're able to postpone this meeting, so we can get everyone together, and, uh, and then we see from there, see if we's able to do it.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak in opposition? Uh, speak to the community process?
So, we had, uh, two, uh, direct-to-Butter meetings, that these folks actually attended either one of them, uh, both of the Butters that we heard from. We also had two-
When were they?
They were in, like, mid, uh, uh, late, uh, May, mid-May was not Memorial Day weekend, and then another one, they were all sponsored by the Mayor's Office, and then another one in July as follow-up. Uh, most of these folks came to one of those meetings. We also had two Eagle Hill Civic Association meetings that were not held on holidays, but held, uh, during their regularly scheduled meetings, uh, which were also flyer. Um, during that process, we've really changed this project, um, and Garrett actually went door-to-door in that area, talking to people and showing them the plans individually, so-
And how has it changed?
Um, so the building was brought in on the sides, parking was added to the structure, and then the whole design and facade was changed, that traditional historic look, um, on the project, so, um, you know, really tried to accomplish it.
Okay, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
A motion to approve with continued BPDA design review, and just special attention, counselor and, and, uh, developer, to work with the neighborhood.
Yeah, important. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You have Butters right there waiting to speak with you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Calling BOA 853-982-114 Bennington Street. This is to extend living space into the basement. Violation to Article 53, Section 9, excessive FAR. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Drago, an address of 15 Broad Street, representing Kane Bernstein, the owner of 114 Bennington Street. Uh, as was mentioned, uh, this is a, a project proposing to completely gut renovate this structure, it's in poor condition now, uh, it's an existing three-family, and we're asking to extend living space into the basement, uh, giving a little bit more room to that first floor, uh, it would allow us to have, um, two additional bedrooms and a bath. Um, the ceiling height of the basement is seven foot six, uh, that, that would become a three-bedroom, two-bath, uh, unit at 1,844 square feet. The other two units are existing, the second and third floor, they're two-bed, two-bath with, with decks, um, and our only violation was FAR, uh, and that's existing, uh, it was 1.11, it would be going up to 1.48, uh, and what's allowed is 1.0 under the code.
So, this bed, this first into the basement unit would have four bedrooms?
It would have three. It would have two, uh, bedrooms in the basement, one upstairs.
Okay, and, um, utilities, where are the utilities?
Uh, there'd be a dedicated utility space in the, in the basement, separate from the unit.
Mr. Bazani, does this look like a direct connection from the first to the basement?
Yeah, it, it does. It has a direct connection from the living room, the first floor, down into the basement.
But it's mechanicals, it looks like the mechanicals are in the unit, or?
Yeah, um-
The building mechanicals are in the unit?
No, each of, each of the unit mechanicals are in their own unit.
Correct, yeah.
In the basement, there's a mechanical unit-
And there's a sprinkler-
For the basement unit-
Correct.
Okay.
And there's a sprinkler space, 'cause the building will be sprinkled as well.
It's fine.
Okay. Any, uh, how are the plans?
Adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Jesus Garcia with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we would like to speak on record in support for this project. Thank you.
And Chair, members of the board, the City Councilwoman, Lydia Edwards' office, since they're only, uh, live, extending the living space, the council wishes to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Like a motion to approve with, um, just a straight-up move.
Yeah, it's all interior. May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 842-916-38B, 38 Fleet Street. Propose two-story vertical addition to create two new dwelling units, confirm occupancy as a three-family, and a detached retail and change of occupancy to a five-unit residential building and detached retail store. Fleet Street here?
It's Mr. Morancy.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I didn't see you there, George. This is, violation to Article 54, Section 10, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive, Article 54, Section 10, usable open space is insufficient, Article 54, Section 10, the rear yard is insufficient, and Article 54, Section 18, roof structure restrictions, and Article 54, Section 21, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is George Morancy, an attorney, with the business address of 350 West Broadway, uh, in South Boston. My clients are the Fiamaras, they're sitting to my right, Chris Fiamara and his mother. Uh, Madam Chair, members, uh, this is an application to, uh, renovate and extend the building owned by the Fiamaras located at 38 Fleet Street in the North End. Uh, the building, the property's somewhat unique, it's, uh, a three-story building containing, uh, three rental units, three dwelling units. Uh, to the left, on the same lot, as part of the same parcel, is a single-story commercial structure. Uh, combined, it's one property, so it's actually a mixed-use, uh, parcel according to the Inspection Services Department. Uh, you'll note that on the refusal letter, there's a reference made to the occupancy committee. Uh, this permit application was submitted in February, the refusal letter didn't issue until sometime in June, uh, because Inspection Services did in fact have to go in, there was no long-form confirmed record of occupancy for the property. Uh, but it is, uh, and has been for many, many years, a three-unit, a three residential unit building, again, with a, uh, commercial storefront on the first floor to the left, the buildings are physically unconnected, uh, except, uh, to the, it's on the sense that they're on the same site. The, uh, renovation would be to increase the story height, the vertical height of the building, by two stories, uh, one unit per floor, two additional units, so the occupancy would change from three, three dwelling units to five dwelling units maintaining the existing commercial space. Um, the, uh, building would be entirely renovated, would be brought up to, uh, building code standards, it would be fully sprinkled, uh, and the new egress system, uh, would be added. Uh, in terms of the, uh, the units and what's happening with them, uh, there is, uh, currently, uh, a unit on the, uh, first floor in the basement, approximately 1,579 square feet, that's a three-bedroom, two-bath unit, uh, that would become a two-bedroom, uh, unit. Uh, there's currently a basement, uh, a basement bedroom that would be brought up to the first floor, so the only bedrooms would in fact be on the first floor, and that would become a two-bedroom unit. Uh, Unit 2 on the second floor is about 998 square feet, that's a two-bedroom, one-bath, that would become a slightly smaller 924-square-foot, two-bedroom, two-bath unit. Uh, the third floor, uh, unit extends somewhat into the attic space, that is about 1,606 square feet, that's a three-bedroom unit. Um, the, uh, new Unit 3, again, would be simply a floor-through, um, everything above the first floor would be floor-through units of approximately 924 square feet, so, uh, Unit 3 would be a 920-foot square foot, uh, two-bedroom, two-bath, same for Unit 4, same for Unit 5. This is, uh, located in the multifamily residential MFR district in, in the North End Neighborhood District. Uh, the violations owe to, uh, an FAR violation, the maximum FAR in the district is 3.0, the current FAR is 1.99, it would be a modest violation in terms of the resulting FAR, which would be 3.2. Uh, the, uh, there is also a citation owing to rear yard insufficiency, uh, the floor pl, uh, floorprint of the building is not changing, uh, this is an existing non-conformity with respect to rear yard setback, it's zero at the rear, it has been zero, uh, 12 feet is required. To the immediate rear of the building is, uh, a Mass Highway Department vent shaft, uh, in, uh, building that's, uh, tied into the, uh, Sumner and Callahan tunnels. Uh, there's a violation owing to restricted roof structure districts, there's really no roof structure, but there is a projection above the roof level, and that's simply a stairway platform for the egress system, so it provides access to the roof from the new egress system and stairway on the side of the building, and obviously, uh, egress from the roof, uh, down the stairs. Uh, and there's also a violation cited for, uh, insufficient off-street parking. Again, uh, it, the, the building, uh, the buildings occupy the entire site, it's the North End, it's simply impossible to add parking. Uh, the, uh, building itself, uh, would, would match essentially amassing, uh, everything else that is on Fleet Street, the addition itself, uh, the Fiamaras intend to do in brick to match the, uh, the existing aesthetic design of the street. And finally, there is a, uh, an insufficient usable open space violation. Uh, and I mention this last because it's important, because it's, uh, important in the context of, of one of the opposition letters, a D opposition letter, that the board received from the North End Waterfront Residents Association, uh, that cited not opposition to the, uh, uh, change of occupancy in the new dwelling units, but to what is termed a, a deck, recreational deck space, uh, which this is not. Plans evidence the fact that there's an existing non-conforming, um, um, metal fire escape that's being replaced. This is a new code-compliant egress system that's providing stairway down, as I said, from the roof. These are steel-grade platforms. On the plans, it says deck, because quite literally, it is, it is decking, it's, it's steel-grade decking, but, as part of an egress system, and, uh, this is not intended to be recreational deck space, and that is, um, uh, supported by the fact that the application incurred an insufficient usable open space violation. Adding two units, uh, under the North End Code, uh, 50 square feet of usable open space is provided by dwell, uh, for each dwelling unit, uh, we would have satisfied the insufficient usable op, uh, the, the required, uh, uh, usable open space, if this were in fact a residential deck, it wouldn't have been cited, because 100 square feet would support the It wouldn't have been cited because a hundred square feet would support the two additional units. The violation stands because there is not open space and there's no roof deck.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Drives are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair members of the board. Maria Lanza, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. We held in a butters meeting for this project on March twelfth, which the butters did come and show their support for the project. They also have the unanimous support of the North End Waterfront Neighborhood Council. Thank you.
The question of the City Council, Lady Edwards' office. She wishes to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Are you speaking in support? So why don't you go up there, put your name and address on the record?
My name is Joseph Carrigal. I own two apartment buildings within twenty-five yards of this property. I've known the Fiermaras for many years. They've always helped, kept up their property, have been honorable neighbors, have maintained the properties very, very well, have never rented the apartment short-term, which we all appreciate. And I think adding two units to the neighborhood, where housing is a critical factor that we all need, and under the quality of the way they're going to do it aesthetically and so forth, would be a big benefit to the neighborhood, and I'm totally in for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval with BPVA Design Review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling BOA eight two four one seven three, forty-three Monmouth Street.
Thank you.
Just to confirm occupancy as a two-family dwelling, renovate the entire interior, remove a leaking roof and replace it with a new roof. Violation Article fifty-three, Section nine, the required sideyard setback is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Colin Winkler, forty-three Monmouth Street, Boston, Mass. I'm the homeowner.
So tell us what you're proposing.
So essentially, I gutted the entire interior myself. As I opened the walls, I found a series of structural problems. Some were illegal work from the past, others were just poor maintenance. And in doing so, I noticed that the attachment in the back has a pitched roof that has no header running down. It's kind of an architectural marvel. I have no idea how it stands. And the chimney had basically caved in, and the weight-bearing.
So wait a second. So you're, you purchased this property with the understanding, was it a two-family dwelling?
Yes. I purchased it as a two-family three years ago. I found structural problems in the bathroom on the first floor, and then I followed it up the wall to the bathroom, the second floor, all within my first six months of owning my first home. And at that point in time, it was no longer livable.
So was the house taxed as a two-family? Do you know?
I don't know.
Do you receive a bill for a two-family?
I had to present the case, it being a two-family, to the Board of Occupancy, I believe. And then they confirmed it, I thought. And then.
So tell us, what's the proposed size of each unit?
So as I purchased it, the first floor was its own unit, and then the second and third floor were another separate series of units. And the second unit on the, on the second and third floor had seven bedrooms at the point of sale, and I'm consolidating it down to three large bedrooms.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
The drawings are adequate.
So what's the, what are the plans? Tell us. The bottom unit has how many units? How many bedrooms?
For me, one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How many, just one bedroom? And the second unit will have three?
Three.
Okay.
So again, I downsized significantly. I was, I purchased it, my mom's a flight attendant. She, I wanted a.
Hold on, hold on.
Yeah.
So your only, only violation is side yard, and this was an existing side yard? Okay.
It's a slightly complicated situation because a neighbor next door has moved into the yard slightly. But I own the property. I'm trying to remove a roof that's coming down and replace it with a flat deck. And it's been a very interesting experience in life.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair members of the board, Jesus Garcia with the Office of Neighborhood Services. During the community process, at the butters meeting, no one of the butters expressed any concerns about the proposal, and also the project received the support from Eagle Hill Civic Association. Therefore, we would like to speak in record in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, Julie Evans, City Council, Lady Edwards' office. She wishes to be recorded in support as well.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Are you in support or in opposition? Are you in support or in opposition or neutral? Opposition? If you want to put your name and address on the record, that's up to you. If you don't, that's also up to you.
My name is Jane Dean.
Can you come up to the podium?
My name is Jane Dean. I live next door at forty-five Monmouth Street with my mother, Ruth.
Are you in opposition?
Yes.
And what's the opposition based on?
The opposition is based on the alleyway that runs between our houses is, is, has been taken care of by us for over fifty years, about fifty-two years. And Colin would like to knock the fences down that keep people, and people from coming in into our, in the rear of our house.
So is this alleyway owned by you jointly?
No.
No.
It is owned by me.
No.
Okay, so this sounds like it's an issue that cannot be addressed here. It needs to go to land court or somewhere else.
Adverse possession.
So all I want to know is, this is a proposal for a two-family. Is there a concern about that?
It is a two-family dwelling.
Okay, so you, you're confirming that it's a two-family? Okay, thank you.
I'm in opposition about the deck.
Okay, okay, thank you. So what we have before us, thanks a lot, you can have a seat. So what we have before us is, can you speak to the roof deck, please?
Absolutely. I just was removing the current roof because it's not structurally sound, and I was hoping to replace it with a flat top, exactly the same size as the building. I don't want to go out at all.
And what's the access to that roof deck?
It was a third-floor exit, and there was a, if you see the plans, there's a stairwell running down the building that has an entry point on each floor.
Okay.
And it's the second form of egress.
And that conforms with the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Yes, it does.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval with BPVA Design Review, and particular attention given to setbacks on the roof deck, and a look at the exterior stair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much for your time.
Calling the next case, calling BOA eight four zero seven two five eleven, Isabel Street. This is a full interior renovation to four residential units. Proposed three-story rear addition, rear balconies, and penthouse addition on roof and roof deck. Install a new six-foot-high fence and retaining wall, and raise the existing garage. Violation Article thirty-two, Section four. This is G card applicability. Article sixty-three, Section twenty-four, off-street parking is insufficient. Article sixty-three, Section twenty. Mill roof structure design or use for human occupancy shall be erected or enlarged on a roof of an existing building used for residential use. Article sixty-three, Section eight, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty-three, Section eight, the building height is excessive in stories. Article sixty-three, Section eight, the building height is excessive in feet. And Article sixty-three, Section eight point four, townhouse, row house extension. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Ross. I'm an attorney at Prince Lobel. I'm here with my clients, Danny and Benji Mall of Arcs Urban, also two residents of Bay Village, and our architect, Austin Sampson from Guy Grassi Design Group. We're here on a existing four-unit row house in Bay Village that we are looking to maintain four units, but adding two of them. We're going to have two duplex units, one on the basement and first floor, in the middle, two floor-throughs, and then the fourth unit will be a duplex on the fourth and penthouse floors. The applicants live in the neighborhood, they're very active, and they've been working through the community process on their own, and have generated a number of support letters from the.
So, Councilor, could you backtrack? What's the current occupancy of the building?
It's a four-unit. There's actually a fifth illegal unit on it, but it's legally a four-unit.
And it's going to maintain, it continues to be maintained as a full family?
That's correct.
Okay, and with the, with the expansions, is there a roof deck proposed?
Yeah, each of the units would have outdoor space to satisfy the open space requirement. And then on the penthouse unit, there is a roof deck. This is a restricted roof deck district, and so that's one of the violations. I'd also just like to put on the record that the rear of our property is registered land, and so as such, the easement going through it has expired, and we have no access to the garage coming out the back of our unit. So what we're going to do is we're removing the garage and replacing that mostly with open space in the outdoor area and some building space. But in light of that, kind of unique circumstance of land, it's part of the reason why we went forward with these variances that are in front of you today.
Question?
Madam Chair members of the board, Christian Simonelli, Boston Groundwater Trust. At this time, I'd like to request a hold for signature. The plans are currently before BWSC and are under review, but the plans have been submitted.
So this is row house, and what's the total square footage addition?
We're going to six thousand twenty-four, and that's up from, depends how you count it. We have a garage we can't use. With the garage, five thousand one thirty. Without the garage, forty-six eighty-six.
So to the core of the building, this is altogether just a thousand square foot addition?
Yeah, a little north of that. We're going from a two point four-four FAR to a three point one-three FAR. This is in a two point oh FAR district.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Drives are adequate. Councilor, please, this member's application. How goes Ms. Minnick?
I didn't do work on the easement, but my understanding is that on registered land, easements don't survive the same way on non-registered land. And that is, these lawyers not looking at it, relying back from, from law school when I was there. Again, we didn't look at that. We took for, I think they had different counsel looking at, and we just, we ran with that and were made to believe that that was the case.
So when we purchased the site, there was permissive use agreement from the current owners of the parking lot. Prior, immediately prior to our purchase, they removed that permissive use, and so there's no longer any access because it is registered land, and there is no building to have an easement.
Were you notified about that?
Was it, yes.
You were, and you so, you chose not to challenge it or not to participate?
Well, we can't challenge it because it is registered land. Prior to our ownership.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair members of the board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicants did meet with the Bay Village Neighborhood Association. They have received a letter of non-opposition. We also held in a butters meeting that was really well-attended, and they've worked out any issues or remaining concerns with the butters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam of the chair members of the board, Anna Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. We would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to grant his arm only for present, but with BPVA continued design review.
It's in a, the Bay Village, architectural, yeah.
Bay Village Design Review. However, we will hold signature until we receive the stamp.
Sir, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you.
Calling BOA eight three nine four zero nine, one oh two to one oh six, South Street. South Street here? This is to build a new larger roof deck, a thirty-by-thirty roof deck, composite decking, and black metal handrails. The violation Article forty-four, Section six. Enlarging the roof deck requires relief from BOA. Rooftop additions. Name and address for the record, please.
The name is Avril Carmine at one oh two South Street.
And I am Connor Christopher Carmine at one oh two South Street also.
Thank you. So can I ask, thanks for putting your name. Can I ask your mom some questions?
Yeah.
Okay, so tell us what you're proposing.
Just to replace the roof deck that was taken off for roof repairs, and it would be the same roof deck, just expanded a little bit more.
And how will you access that roof deck?
Through our access that we had before. There's a roof hatch and a spiral staircase.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Drives are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair members of the board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of Dan Chen, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam of the chair members of the board, Anna Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. We would also like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for.
Do you have a question?
I just had one question. I wanted to ask Connor if he thought we should be in favor of this.
Yeah.
Okay.
May I have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, BOA eight four six three one seven, three twenty-four Newbury Street. We also have a companion, BOA eight four six three one six, three twenty-four Newbury Street. This is to change occupancy to include a restaurant, interior restaurant fit-out for a floor, including a minor demo, new interiors, new mechanicals. The violation Article eight, Section seven. Restaurant use, item thirty-seven, is conditional. We also have building code. This is Section, Section nine addition, seven eighty CMR, architectural access. Any reference in seven eighty to accessory shall be considered to five twenty-one CMR, the Architectural Access Board, five twenty-one, which is enforced by the building official. Plans submitted do not provide a wheelchair-accessible entrance to the proposed restaurant. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Brett Peterson. I'm at Ten Hitchcock Farm Road in Andover, Massachusetts.
You take your hat off.
So tell us what you're proposing.
We are proposing, seeking approval to relieve from the building code violation for both access and use. We are proposing to put in a, a restaurant called Witch Witch. My wife and I are the owners of the franchise in the Boston area. It is a takeout sandwich restaurant, about forty percent takeout, about sixty percent eat-in. It's a restaurant where you order your sandwich, you write it on a bag, bring it up to the register, and we fulfill the bag, the sandwich exact in the way it is ordered.
So tell us why you cannot make this restaurant accessible?
We have been through the access board and have approval from the access board. It is an older building on Newbury Street in the final block by Mass Ave. There is four steps up into the building, which is twenty-four inches. That would require, require twenty feet of ramp. There's not space to go into the street. The existing, back of the alley is a nice lighted alley, but it would have to go up a full flight, and it would have to tunnel through the wall and go through the kitchen. There's only access that way. If we were to lower the front to the grade, another option that we put forth, that would require the ceiling at the garden level to be lowered below the requirements. So all the options that we put forward were just not feasible. What we are proposing is a call button, you know, at grade covered with a lighted sign. So when someone comes up with a full menu, they can order the menu. We'll come out with a bag, or they can order from there, help them place the order, go in, make the sandwich, and bring it out, just like any other takeout would be. It's about a five-minute process.
Okay, what's in that space now?
Well, it's a, it's a open retail space. It had a pop-up, a store from Mantucket for a while, and prior to that, some other retail. I'm sorry, I don't know what was.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Drives are adequate. Did you actually appear before the architectural director?
Yes.
And Tom Hawkins granted you relief?
Yes, we have a letter from them.
You have a letter?
Yes.
Will you submit that?
Sure, I thought it was already submitted here.
And in essence, summarize the letter, please.
They granted relief unanimously.
Okay, okay. So our usual procedure is that we listen very carefully to their recommendations. I would make a motion therefore to grant the relief, the building code relief requested on the basis of, is that the Architectural Barrier Access Board has a way that you can access that.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And the plans, how are the plans for the three twenty-four?
Drives are adequate.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair members of the board, Jessica R. with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We hosted a butters meeting in which one butter, direct butter came out in full support. The property owner is also in full support, no other resident.
The property owner is also in full support, no other residents. Are there any questions or concerns? And I'm almost sure that Elliot is behind me on behalf of NAB to share his support as well, so we have no questions or concerns at this time. Thank you.
See this aura, huh?
We don't do support, we do non-opposition.
Non-opposition.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Elliot Lafford, Neighborhood Association, Back Bay. We met with the applicant, and he described the use. It's a 40-seat indoor, no outdoor seating. The cooking is only a conveyor oven that requires no exhaust except remove heat. And based on their description, we are not in opposition.
Thank you.
Will there be a new signage on the, on the restaurant?
Just one blade sign and one sign over the window. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion approved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
With the usual takeout language, Mr. Presley?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set with those provisos.
Thank you. Good luck.
Calling BOA 841390, 21 Winfield Street. This is a full interior renovation, the existing three-family dwelling, and extend living space to the basement for Unit 1. Construct a new roof deck. Violation is Article 27S, Section 5. It's in the South Boston IPod applicability. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Attorney Nick Cizula, McDermott Quilty and Miller, 28 State Street, Suite 802 in Boston. With me to my immediate right is Jason Weissman from JM Investment LLC. They are the appellant on this appeal. And to my far right is Derek Rubenoff from Derek Rubenoff Architects. I could just give a brief introduction if you'd like. The property is in South Boston between G and H Streets, right around the corner from East 8th Street. The proposal is to completely gut renovate and reconfigure this existing three-family dwelling to remain as a three-family dwelling. It's about 3,500 square foot building amongst those three units. And the proposal is to, again, renovate, but also extend living space into the basement for the first unit, so it would not be its own unit, it would be attached to that first floor unit, about 300 square feet for a family room, den, gym, et cetera. No expansion is proposed at all to this building as a part of this exist, a part of this appeal. All these changes are triggering the IPod as a result of the gut renovation and the cost of the renovation. And the proposal also includes the addition of a small zoning compliant roof deck, which can only be accessed from within the third floor unit, so it's private to the third floor. That's about 216 square feet. And again, it would be private to just that third floor, it could only be accessed through that third floor. So, basically, much-needed renovations to this building and some interior reconfiguration and expansion with no expansion of the building on the exterior. So, there'll be no change to the exterior of the building from what's there now, other than the addition of that small roof deck.
How are the plans, Mr. Presley?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time on behalf of John Allison, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Anna Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. We would also like to go on record in support. Thanks.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Calling the last two cases for 10:30. Calling BOA 859540, 106R, 108 Rare of Mount Pleasant Avenue, and also BOA 859598108, Mount Pleasant Avenue. This is the combined, this is the combined lots at 106R, Mount Pleasant, 108 Mount Pleasant Ave, and a vacant lot into one lot building on a total of 8,351 square feet. Erect in addition, change occupancy to a three-family dwelling, existing house to be known as 106, 108 Rare, Mount Pleasant. Violation is Article 50, Section 44. Lot size for the three families insufficient. Article 50, Section 44. Two dwellings on the same lot. Article 50, Section 44. Two buildings on one lot. Article 50, Section 44. Side yard with driveways to off-street parking cannot be less than 10 feet wide. Article 50, Section 29. The location of the main entrance of the dwelling shall face the front lot line. Article 50, Section 29. Two dwelling on the same lot. Article 50, Section 29. Lot size for the three families insufficient. Article 50, Section 29. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 29. Usable open space is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29. The front yard setback is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29. The side yard setback is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29. Rear yard setback is insufficient. And Article 50, Section 43. Off-street parking requirement is insufficient. This is for 108 Mount Pleasant, erect a new three-family house on the same lot. Violations are Article 50, Section 44. Two buildings on one lot. Article 50, Section 44. Two dwellings on the same lot. Article 50, Section 44. Side yard of off-street parking driveways cannot be less than 10 feet wide. Article 50, Section 29. The lot area for additional dwelling unit is insufficient. Article 50. Floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 50. Usable open space is insufficient. Article 50. The front yard setback is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29. The side yard setback is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29. The rear yard setback is insufficient. And Article 50, Section 43. Off-street parking requirement is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney John Pulginie, 10 Forbes Road in Brantree. And with me today is Drew Ulrich, who is the owner, developer of this proposal. The proposal before you, as Mr. Fortune stated, we actually have three lots of land here. There's an existing two-family in the rear of this, so it's a combination of these lots. The rear would be converted from a two-family to a three-family, and it would be, there's a vacant lot because this is very much back in the lot. The vacant, the front vacant lot would also be a new construction, three-family home. The, went through the violations. A lot of the violations are existing because of the rear lot is sitting back, the driveways and existing driveway that accesses that. We're actually widening that driveway by three feet. Each unit in these, in 106, 106A was, they're all two-bedroom, one's two-bedroom, two-bath, 984 square feet. Unit 2's three-bedroom, two-bath, 1336 square feet. And Unit 3 is three-bedroom, two-bath, 1238 square feet. Each one of these units will have a parking spot. And in 108 Mount Pleasant, which would be the front lot, which would be a new construction, three-family, units, two-bedroom, two-bath, they're all two-bedroom, two-bath, 1,065, 1,072, and 1,225. We went through a pretty good, robust community process, met with everybody, and I provided the board today 13 letters of support from abutters in support of this project.
So, can you speak to the non-nechetiness?
Sure. So, violations.
I think, is it two dwellings in the same lot? Let's see. Side yard driveways cannot be less than 10 feet. What are you proposing?
It was, I think it was eight feet, and they added three. We added three feet from what is, what is currently there now.
So, do you have a relationship with 104 Mount Pleasant? Because it says common passageway, but that's just...
That was to access the existing house that sits in the rear of the property. So, it was a driveway, that's what, currently, that's what's being used.
Okay. Okay. Location of the main entrance, this is because it's the rear building.
Correct.
And off-street parking insufficiency cited on both. So, for six families, what's required?
It's one-to-one. The reason for that parking insufficiency is because in the rear property, the parking actually is in front of the house as opposed to be behind the house. Even though it's behind the front structure, it is in front of the rear, rear property.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Presley?
The drawings are adequate.
And you're having a side ramp on the first front building?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I didn't hear you.
You have a side yard ramp on the first, on the first building at 108?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, just to follow up on the chairs. I'm a little confused about the driveway access. You've got the common passageway to the rear, which, which accesses these five proposed parking spaces?
The, the common passageway, yes. So, there, right now, that's an existing, what you're looking at on the plan there is an existing common driveway that runs in between 104 and 106.
Yeah. 104 and 108.
104 and 108. And then that's being expanded by three feet for access to the rear. Even though it's currently used, it's just to widen that passageway.
And, but the curb cut is...
Existing.
The curb cut is existing, and then it widens into that, it goes all the way to the back and also to the, and is there an easement with the, with 104?
It's in common ownership.
In common ownership.
Yep.
Where, where do they park?
I'm sorry?
Why does 104 park?
Behind the house.
So, behind their house?
Yep.
Okay.
And are these, these units that we're discussing today for sale or rental?
They're all for sale condominiums, yes.
Any other questions from the board?
So, Counselor, the distance between the two buildings then is, they're, is it eight foot three plus five feet, 13 feet between the two buildings?
Correct.
And the two, and that, that building is owned by a client.
I'm sorry, Ms. Presley?
That building is owned by a client, the building on the left.
He, no, he has, the building in the rear and the, in the construction, so that is an independently-owned building on the left. When you're looking at, Mount Pleasant Street, looking at the property?
Yeah, with the 104.
Yep. That is owned by somebody else.
And that's a common driveway? Counselor?
Yes, it is.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of Joshua Batten, we would like to go on record in support of this proposal. I do just want to add a note that there are, there has been some contention in terms of density and parking around this issue, but they did meet with the Civic Association at least twice. They did have a butters meeting, and then there is, you know, just some concern about the number of units, but we do feel comfortable supporting this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Senator Mellon from Counselor Kim Janey's office. We would like to go on the record to request for a deferral due to direct abutters concern for more community process. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon, Madam Chairwoman and Members of the Board. My name is Joanne Keith, and I live at 105 Mount Pleasant Ave, which is directly across the street from this property. Currently, there are approximately 25 units of low-income subsidized and market-rate rentals to the immediate left and right of this property. We, our neighborhood, have worked very closely with developers in the past. We've worked with the Department of Neighborhood and Development, and also Azalea and Urban Core to develop firehouse lofts at 409 Dudley, which were nine units, and at 407 Dudley Street, which is also a nine-unit commercial and residential project. We are asking that the developer continue to meet with us until we can meet in the middle for lesser units. Excuse me. We're looking for a more conducive number of units that reflect the neighbor's commitment to creating dwellings that reflect the want of the immediate neighbors. The letters of support, I also represent the Neighborhood Association, which Andrew has met with a few times, but we are still looking to speak with him to come to a number of units that will satisfy the direct abutters.
Hello, my name is Juan Diaz. I am the son of the current owner of 104 Mount Pleasant, Carmen Diaz. She's my 80-year-old mother. Her language skills in English are not that great, so therefore she sent me in her behalf. I think I've, I've sent an email to 1010 Mass Ave as to her opposition of it. The common driveway that's being called driveway is really not a common driveway, it's a common walkway, which is the access to 108 and 106, 106 and 108 Mount Pleasant, which is in the rear of 104 Mount Pleasant Ave, which was the original structure some hundred years ago, whenever it was built. And these other structures were built later on, and that was given a access to 106 and 108. There's also a sewer problem, which is there's a manhole in that driveway, as well as, we discovered some 25 years ago, there was an obstruction in the sewage system of 106 and 108, and we discovered that the system goes through and under Mount Pleasant Ave. So, we had to then bring it up to a PVC type instead of ceramic piping in order for them to have some access to on quad, the whole system for 106 and 108. Also, as far as the parking, off-street parking, there really isn't any. It was an agreement between my parents and the Allstons, which owned 106 and 108 Mount Pleasant, which we used that common walkway as a driveway to have access to park, for them to park in front of the 106 and 108, and for us to have a parking behind 104, which pretty much, we had no backyard because of the parking situation to get it off the street. It's very tight as is, it's, it's been tight for as long as I know it, for 40 years. And now it's not to have off-street parking and having these issue with the, that common driveway, the common walkway, actually. There was a stipulation that neither owner could fence it, gate it, because otherwise we would have been cutting off the access to 106 and 108 by gating it or closing it off. I'm not too sure if that, I believe that was an deed when the structure was bought, but I'm not too sure about it at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Because you will be adding to the, to the driveway with an eight, with eight feet, essentially.
Yes, on, on the property that we own.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Thank you. So, anything else?
Yeah, we wanted a deferral in order to meet and see if we can manage this situation.
Was there ever a structure at 108?
Excuse me?
Was there ever a structure at 108?
The structure of 108 is actually one house that's been split down the middle, which one side is 106, the other one is 108. On the vacant lot, which they refer to as 108, was nothing, for 40 years, I know of nothing there.
Okay. That's what I was asking. I want to beg your pardon.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor, any response?
I guess the big response would be access to the parking in the back. I understand Mr. Diaz classified it as a, a walkway, not a driveway. The parking is existing, and they're using it as a driveway, both properties at this point are both using that as a driveway. So, this is expanding that driveway even wider than is existing under its current use for a better access.
Have you had a community process?
We have. We've, went through a community process. I did give the board 13 letters of support from the butters.
We have those.
Just to, obviously, everybody can't come who are supportive of a project to testify in behalf of it, but we did provide that to the board with, along with the plans that we've submitted.
Okay.
Can I ask you a quick one?
Sure.
So, for 106 and 106A, how many units?
Three units.
Three units? And how many, so how many bedrooms at each unit again? Just to get an idea, how many people will be living back there? I'm not really familiar with the area.
Two, three bedrooms.
Two, three bedrooms and two, and one two-bedroom. So, it's, uh, I, I think we went through the unit size, two-bedroom, two-bath, nine hundred and eighty-four square feet, three-bedroom, two-bath, thirteen thirty-six, and three-bedroom, two-bath, twelve thirty-eight.
And, and in terms of this being for sale, uh, in terms, the question raised on affordability, so just, whatever the market will bear, is that the, uh, plan or?
So, it's a very good question, it came up a lot during the community process with, with respect to density, because the, uh, goal and objective of a lot of the people that live in this neighborhood, and we heard through the community process, that they would like to have more density to get something that's more affordable, so that currently, young people who live in the neighborhood who are renting could have the potential to buy something. So, because the density is, um, the three units as opposed to a two-unit, it would allow for that opportunity, because it would be a lower price point than it would be if it were a two-unit, just based on simple economics.
Okay. Given that information, may I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to grant the relief requested, the, uh, BPBA design review, and with a request for, I'm not sure if you make a, for continued, uh, cooperation and means with your, uh, direct butters to try to solve.
Senator?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I oppose.
I oppose.
Okay, the motion does not carry, since we are missing one member here, so it's been denied. Okay?
Thank you.
Calling the eleven-thirty rediscussions, calling the first case, BOA seven 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 zero nine eight, twenty-nine Oak Street. This is a change of occupancy from a three-family to a four-family, and then construct in addition. The violation is Article thirty-two, Section nine, G Card enforcement, Article forty-three, Section nineteen, residential conversion is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, I am the board, I am pleased myself from the space.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Patrick Bohoney, I'm the zoning attorney with business address one sixty Federal Street. And to my right is my affiliate, Julius Sobol, zero five.
One Curtis Street, East Boston.
How was your proposal?
On the outset, Madam Chair, we would like to waive any zoning relief unrelated to groundwater conservation overlay district. The, the other violation as advertised initially...
I'm sorry, you're trying to waive relief, what does that mean?
There's, we're not seeking relief on any, on any item today, just simply here for groundwater conservation overlay compliance.
And so, do you have a new refusal letter?
Really, we don't, we don't matter here, no.
So, how can we proceed if we don't have a new?
Well, they submitted a, a set of drawings, ISD has a new set of plans, the plans examiner is out on leave, the, uh, to undergo that type of surgery, but the plans are submitted, and also the, the decision will reflect that we're not seeking relief. Um, some items, some projects, as they go through the community process, and in this case specifically, we had one item that we're seeking conditional use permanent, and we're no longer seeking relief.
Okay, so, okay, let's just backtrack, so you want to change the occupancy for, from a three to a four?
Yeah, so, the occupancy, the proposed occupancy will be a three, and thereby eliminating any zoning relief that the project would be seeking. So, by eliminating that relief, we are...
So, doing an addition?
Yes, but there is no dimensional relief seeking associated with that addition. The height, the, there is no riddance, side yard, the height is compliant, the height is eighty feet, we're significantly below that. So, again, the only relief that was, it's not even relief, the only item that we're here for today is groundwater, and my decision I submitted to the board, uh, will reflect that.
Okay, um, Christian?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and at this time, I would request, um, a whole fist ring to show the plans are currently before Water and Sewer. Uh, I have confirmation that they have been submitted, I also have a copy of those plans, but we do not have the letters of yet from Water and Sewer.
Thank you. Um, is, how are the plans, Mr. Alak?
Uh, the drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
And, we, we, if possible, Madam Chair, we would like to treat it as a groundwater conservation hearing, where it's just compliance, if, if as likely possible.
See, the problem, this puts us in a little bit of a quandary, because, um, we can always take applicants' words for it, but, you know, we are driven by the refusal letter from ISD, and if there's no refusal letter, we have no clear confirmation that, um, in fact, um, this is, um, this is, um, as-is. I mean, not, it's not meant in any way to be...
No, I just...
But, but, but for, for what it does for us is it provides us with clear guidelines about what's being, uh, proposed.
And, and Madam Chair, that's a good point, with this instance, because the relief on the, as advertised, that was initially on the refusal letter, is relatively straightforward, and that relief was converted for additional dwelling in this meeting. The change from a three-unit building to a proposed four-unit building was the relief. In this case, as the plans have been submitted to the board and deemed adequate, what we are seeking is to keep that three-family, and that, it's a very explainable situation in that the relief initially sought was only related to the change of occupancy, thereby not changing the occupancy, uninvigorously to, to laymen's and, and non-attorneys alike, it is clear that we are all, and my decision will be unwavering of this, it'll only be for groundwater, but by saying this publicly...
And what's, what's the addition, what's the use of the addition?
It's, it's, uh, expanding of the three-family.
Madam Chair, can, can we treat this in the way that we, uh, do without no building, total relief, and just make a motion for zoning, for no zoning relief?
This, this is, um, suppose we could, um...
For groundwater compliance, right?
Okay.
Yeah, that would be a separate motion.
I just want to get a sense from, um, the people in the room here, including, uh, Counselor Flynn. Um, I want to get an understanding, um, on, um, from your perspective, that, that you understand that this is not, uh, ma- requesting a, a conversion from a three to a four, and thus, it's here before us, just on a technical basis, on the groundwater recharge. Is that clear to everybody in the room here, who's here, obviously, uh, obviously here because of concerns about the project or interest in the project? Um, Counselor, your, your, is that your understanding, have you spoken with the community that's here?
Yes, Madam Chair, um, thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here. Um, it is my understanding now that it's, um, it's a three-unit, but prior to this, I was always under the impression that it was a, that it was a four-unit.
Okay. And it's only here for groundwater, and generally, when we have a case with groundwater, because it's, it's a technical, it's a technical issue with water and sewer, uh, basically, when we get their, um, their letter, we then, um, approve and sign the decision.
Right, I understand, um, I think the groundwater issue, water and sewer issue, um, are critical. They're important issues in Chinatown. Um, I need to take a look at some of the documentation, um, from the developer, from the contractor, and to read it, I don't think they're there yet, I, I think they also need another community meeting. Um, I have heard from concerns from many Chinatown residents in organizations that this project will also threaten Chinatown's historic small-scale row houses. The proposed infill eliminates the backyard and is out of scale for the block. Many residents have expressed concern that the investor-owner, JP Capital, has made no commitment to preserving any of the proposed units as affordable housing. Finally, I have heard concerns that this project will set a precedent allowing increased density in Chin- Chinatown in the area that is already one of the most densely populated neighborhoods in Boston. Um, Madam Chair, over the last year, we, we saw so many Airbnbs in Chinatown that were taken off the, off the market. Um, a lot of low-income families were moved out of Chinatown, kicked out of Chinatown, a lot of immigrants. I feel that, you know, Chinatown should still be a community for low-income families, for a Chinese community, and I, I do think this sets a bad precedent, uh, for the community, and I'm standing with the community. I'm in Chinatown every day, I listen to their concerns every day, and they made it very clear to me that they're, they're in opposition to this project, and I'm, I stand with the community.
Okay.
And I, I do thank the Chair, and I do thank the Members of the Board for giving me an opportunity to be here.
Okay, so Counselor, um, the only violation, just, just so that, in residents from Chinatown also are, are being informed here, that the only violation is not related to zoning, it's just related to the groundwater recharge. And again, as Christian here, who is our, um, the expert we rely on, has, um, looked at the plans and has testified, so, just, I know I'm repeating myself, but I feel like I have to, okay, thank you, Counselor.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, so, um, so this is a G Card hearing, um, we, we, um...
Madam Chair, just, just so there's no confusion, I think it would be helpful if we did have a motion on the record, but no, no going for the...
That, that is, that is a smart idea, so can we, uh, um, extinguish Article forty-three, Section nineteen, as a request for relief?
I would make a motion, uh, to deny any, uh, something, so...
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so let's now proceed to the G Card violation. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, but to hold signature until, uh, Christian, until full documentation, is that correct?
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, on that piece, the motion carries, obviously, you as applicants and as clients have a lot of work to do with, with the community, so we are relying on you to start that conversation right now. Thank you.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA eight zero six eight zero five, forty, Wilcox Street. Companion case, BOA eight zero six eight zero eight, Fort Forty-eight, Wilcox Street. This is to erect a new four-unit multifamily building. I don't see him here, though.
Let's just move to the next case.
Yeah, okay, we'll hold that one. Calling BOA seven nine two eight nine one, one eleven West Street. Is West Street here?
Okay. Dorset?
Calling, is that West Street?
Nope.
Yeah, no, okay. Is Dorset Street here? Okay, we got a lucky winner. BOA seven nine one four seven five eight Dorset Street. This is an application by renovations to attic space. The violation is Article sixty-five, Section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Barfield Wood, level one of eight Dorset Street.
And is it a one or a two-family dwelling?
Two-family.
And tell us what you're proposing to do.
It's a renovation of the entire house, um, four to five jobs in the building. Um, the attic, that was brought with an existing open rooms in it. Um, we're looking to re-renovate the bedrooms and, 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 uh, um...
Yeah. Okay. Hold on, Ms. Bizani, this is Dorset. It's a ex- expansion into the attic. This was the one that was supposed to be at subcommittee, but, um, didn't, didn't make it on time. Just give us a minute.
Okay.
Is there a community process?
Yes.
Tell us about that.
Um, I think six, um, uh, uh, community resident showed up, um, the ones that lived in the comedian area, and they all supported the project, the mayor's office was there, and they got signatures from, uh, from the town.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
The drawings are adequate.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
One, approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
We're gonna go back to, uh, Wilcox Street, calling BOA eight zero six eight zero five forty, Wilcox Street,
BOA eight zero six eight zero eight forty-eight, Wilcox Street. This is for forty, this is to erect a new four-unit multifamily building. Violation is Article sixty, Section eight, multifamily residential unit building use, four is in, is a forbidden use. Article sixty, Section nine, the lot area for additional dwelling unit is insufficient. Article sixty, Section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty, Section nine, the height requirement is excessive in stories. Article sixty, Section nine, the height requirement is excessive in feet. Article sixty, Section nine, the front yard setback is insufficient. Article sixty, Section nine, side yard setback is insufficient. Article sixty, Section nine, usable open space requirement is insufficient. This is for forty-eight, Wilcox, this erect a new multifamily four dwelling unit with proposed four off-street parking. The violation is Article ten, Section one, off-street parking shall be located no more than five feet from the side lot line. Article sixty, Section eight, a multifamily dwelling is forbidden use. Article sixty, Section nine, the lot area is insufficient. Article sixty, Section nine, the additional lot area is insufficient. Article sixty, Section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty, Section nine, the building height is excessive in stories. Article sixty, Section nine, the usable open space is insufficient. Article sixty, Section nine, the building height is excessive in feet. Article sixty, Section nine, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney John Pulgeni, Ten Forbes Road, Braintree, and with me is, uh, Dave France, who is the, uh, owner of this property. Um, just first, like to point out that, uh, the plans that were submitted to Mr. Bizani are actually, um, through the community process, started out as a four-unit, um, two four-unit buildings, it got scaled back through the community process to a, uh, three-unit, two three-unit buildings to conform with what's existing in the, uh, neighborhood. Uh, the zoning in the neighborhood is three or five thousand, um...
How large are these lots?
Uh, the lots are four thousand square feet, which is consistent with what is existing in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Um, these are four-seal, um, condominiums, three units, and again, as I stated, it was at four, we had several of butters meetings. Um, all the butters felt like if we went to the three, that would be something they would support, because it, it was exactly what's existing in the neighborhood. Um, just for unit count, each unit is, so again, it removes the height requirement, everything, we're at thirty-two feet, we conform with everything, as far as that goes.
Height is irrelevant, um, okay, how about...
Yes, um, so each unit is two bedroom, two bath, and they're approximately eleven hundred square feet per unit. Uh, each unit has one parking spot plus, uh, one visitor spot, um, one is the requirement, so it has one extra. So, we do the, um, we do have some violations, obviously, as my, um, Mr. Fortune read through them. Um, usable open space, again, it went through a pretty robust community process, um, get, bringing from a four to a three, um, and also, I provided the board seven letters of support from a butters, uh, in support of this project.
I'm, um, looking at this, um, this plan in front of me, and can you tell me which, which, um, address is closes to Morton Street, is that forty?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, so the other one is forty, okay. Thank you. Um, so, let's see, we've covered parking, how are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
The drawings are adequate for three families.
So, this has two tandem spaces in the side yard and two rear yard parking?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, my name is Faisal Sharif with Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support, uh, they did work with their neighbors, reducing the number of units, thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Well, sure, approval, BPBA's on.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I'm being told on BOA seven nine two eight nine one one eleven West Street that they had a emergency, and they're not gonna be able to be here, so I'm gonna make a motion for deferral.
Second.
All those in favor?
I, I just, before we do that, there's been several deferrals on this, has there not?
On one eleven West Street?
On one eleven West Street? Do we know?
Um, let's look at the, it's one deferral?
This one.
Okay. So, there's a motion for deferral, is there a second?
One eleven West Street.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
One eleven West.
And we're gonna defer to November thirteenth.
Okay, um, and just, uh, every once in a while, I have to remind people that, um, the number of deferrals are not infinite, and we would like to get, uh, projects closed off as soon as possible.
Right, Madam Chair, we have one more for the, uh, eleven-thirty, from the recommendations that are gonna be heard, so I'm gonna pull it out of order, it's BOA eight five one four five one, Fort Charles River Square. This is a relocation of interior petitions, cutting the new back door, window wells, repair windows and replace roof. Violation is Article thirteen, Section thirteen dash one, excessive FAR. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Chris Tracy from One Allen Associates with a business address of thirty-one New Charden Street in Boston. Let my client introduce herself and her son.
Diana Cauldron for Charles River Square.
Greg Cauldron.
Okay, so, um, this project for the education of the members of the board who were, who weren't there on Tuesday, on Thursday, excuse me, um, there was one piece of information that we needed, and that was to ensure that, um, in fact, this building would stay a single-family dwelling.
Correct, Madam. Correct, Madam Chair, it's an expansion of living space for the family that is there, they have two teenage children. Uh, when they bought the home, there was a kitchenette and a bed, and a bedroom in that basement. Um, there is no new means of egress or ingress being created to that basement, it's simply a renovation, uh, to increase living space for their family. a renovation to increase living space for their family. We've since signed and notarized a covenant with the homeowners association at Charles River Square that confirms that each home in the complex is a single-family home and will remain so.
We receive that electronically for the most of us, so, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set. Thank you.
Madam Chair, the next case is the court remand? Want to do the recommendations? Alright, so we're gonna hold the court remand after I do the recommendations. This was the subcommittee meeting on Thursday, August twenty-third, down at ten-ten Mass Ave. Case BOA eight four six four five nine, for Crystal Place, was the side yard, I'm sorry, was approved with BRA. Case BOA eight five one, BOA eight one zero five two seven six ninety-four East Fifth Street, was to legalize, constructed headhouse was approved with BPDA. BOA seven eight five eight eight one thirty-nine Bailey Street was approved, this was to construct a new rear deck, twelve by fifteen by eight of an existing two-family dwelling. BOA eight four six eight nine nine twenty-seven Beauchmond Street was approved, was a six-by-twelve bone story addition, mudroom. BOA eight four nine five three one sixty-one Cleveland Street was approved with BPDA. This was to add a second-floor dormer to an existing single-family residence. BOA seven nine five zero seven three forty-seven Maple Street was deferred to nine twenty two thousand eighteen. BOA eight four one three 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 seventy-eight Bradwood Street was approved, this was to remodel the attic living space. BOA eight three nine six two eight twelve Ferncroft Road was approved, this was adding a room, bathroom to an existing structure. On the rediscussion, it was BOA eight one four four nine four, for Union Park, was an extended garage, it was approved. That concludes the subcommittee advisory board. Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're...
Now, we go to the, we'll go to the court remand, BOA six nine two zero seven five thirty-seven Farragut Road.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board.
Name and address for the record, sir, thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name is George Morantz, an attorney with a business address of three fifty one Broadway in South Boston. I'm joined by my client, property owner, Brian Hunt of Sun Property Group. Madam Chair, members, the underlying matter here was an application to erect a new zoning-compliant eight-unit building, which was before this Board a few months ago. It was before the Board, even though it was zoning-compliant, on the matter of green belt protection overlay district compliance only. This Board denied the application for the G-Card permit. My client, in turn, appealed the decision of this Board to the Superior Court for Suffolk County. The result is a stipulation, an agreement between the Law Department and my client, and an order from the Superior Court, which is before the Board today, which is essentially a mandate to take further action with respect to G-Card approval, not inconsistent with the order of the Court.
Now, did you print those out for us? I know I looked at it, I looked at it online and...
Set them a little farther, which the Board members...
Okay. So, so, tell us, backtrack a little bit, tell us what was proposed on this project?
I was doing a demo in existing building and to erect a new eight-unit building in an MFR district on Farragut Road in South Boston. It is zoning compliant in terms of being in allowed use, it meets all the off-street parking and dimensional requirements. A portion of the site lies within the green belt protection overlay district, hence triggering the requirement for G-Card approval. And again, the Board denied G-Card approval. The order of the Court, I can't give legal advice to the Board, obviously, but the order of the Court is essentially that the Board is reconsidering the matter to decide whether or not, in approving it, reasonable site plan conditions should be attached to any new decision of the Board.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
No, we have no plans.
Okay. And, any questions from the Board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here to speak in opposition? So, it sounds to me that this, this can be, sorry, go ahead, sorry, I didn't hear, I didn't see.
My name is the Chair, members of the Board, Anna Calderon from Counselor Flynn's office. We've been here before in opposition to this proposal, and we would like to go against it one more time because it's too dense for the neighborhood, nobody, not direct abutters are not happy with it, and so we wanna go against it. Thank you.
My name is Laza Pomp, with eight fifty-two East Third Street, and I, we've gone down to six units, and now back to eight, and I just propose, again, like you said, it's too dense for the neighborhood, thank you.
Now, this is parallel to a case for some of you who may have not been sitting a while ago, where this, this situation was, was very similar, where the only violation was the G-Card.
Which is not a violation, just for the record.
Which is, sorry, which is the only trigger for review by this, by this Board, and I think that design review is an adequate solution to this, to respond to the site plan requirement. So, may I have a motion to that effect?
In accordance with the court...
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set. Good luck. This meeting is now adjourned. This is the proposed remand order. Do I, may I have your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, thank you. My name is Saban Abolsi, I'm actually with the City of Boston Law Department, but this is in reference to litigation involving ten sixteen Everett Street. Here with me is Counsel for the developer, K and K Development, is also here.
My name is Matthew Walco, Smith, Doug and Bule and Ruffo, represent the developer, K and K Development.
So, this is a discussion of the remand order?
Well, Chairwoman, it's actually not a discussion of the remand order. What I'm here today is seeking a vote to enter into what is called an agreement to vacate the lawsuit. So, by way of background, the developer, and Matthew will jump in here if he has anything to add.
So, wait a second, I just wanted to make sure...
So, there's no remand order?
Did anything go out on this to us as staff, from staff?
Yes, yeah, I mean, all the eight boys from time ago, but, but...
Okay, let me, I'd like to make a motion for, to defer this, because it has been a little while since we've seen it, and we'd like to just put it on for the next meeting.
What we've proposed is that the parties settle the pending litigation. The developer and the neighbor have come to terms for a settlement, and in order to consummate that settlement and have the litigation dismissed, we need the other party to the lawsuit, which is the Board, to agree to the terms of the settlement, and we're here to present what those terms of the settlement are.
We've never done this before. It's always been that the Law Department has handled it on our behalf, assuming that both parties are in agreement.
So, Chairman Araho...
Raajo.
Arajo, sorry, my apologies. The, the Law Department, the way we view this is, so, in matters related to litigation, litigation strategy, I totally agree that the Law Department makes most of those decisions, we represent the Board, we act in the best interest of the Board, and we proceed. Ordinarily, the parties enter into settlement agreements, it's usually the developer, and whether it be an abutter or someone else, and what's asked of the Board is only that we stipulate to the dismissal of the lawsuit. This circumstance is a little different. There will be a stipulation of dismissal, which the zoning Board will sign, and ordinarily, the Law Department is involved with that. However, there is an agreement that is kind of, you have to look at it as a side agreement to the stipulation of dismissal, that the abutter, who's the plaintiff in the action, is asking the Board to sign, and because this is, in essence, a settlement agreement that the Board is signing on to, the Law Department does not feel comfortable to make that decision without the Board voicing its opinion one way or another. It's not controversial.
What is the background? Why is the appellant asking for this? I mean, it's unusual.
And can you speak on that behalf? Why are you, why is this request here?
Absolutely. Back in September of two thousand seventeen, our client received the variance for ten to sixteen Everett Street for a four-unit, four-story, nineteen condominium units and twenty-one included spaces of parking. The back neighbor at one eighty-nine to one ninety-one Maverick Street filed an appeal to challenge the variance granted by this Board, and the parties came to an agreement to settle that dispute, and it has several terms. The first term is a confidential monetary payment by my client to the neighbor. The second set of terms is a promise by our client to include in the condominium documents an agreement not to oppose any residential development by the neighbor in the future. There is no current plans by the neighbor to propose, to do in a development, but that promise would last for twenty years. If, for whatever reason, the, my client does not include in the master deed for the condominium this promise not to oppose any future residential development by the neighbor, then the neighbor wants to restart the litigation and vacate the settlement agreement. So, we, it's just a business proposition from our, our point of view.
Yeah, why on earth would we, would we vote on a monetary agreement between your...
Why would we vote on that? Why would we vote if the owner is delinquent in ensuring that the condo documents contain the, the language? Why would, why would...
It's an unusual circumstance, but the, essentially, the neighbor does not trust the developer to follow through. I, I understand this, but, but we have a great development that we, project right now, it's a... We're asking for help to solve our problem that's...
No, I mean, basically, what you're asking us to do is put our, our office behind you when we have no involvement in anything related to how you implement the agreement.
I think the City of Boston, obviously, lawyers are here, they represent us on this Board, we shouldn't have to sign anything. It should be signed by someone in the Law Department on behalf of the zoning Board of Appeals, not somebody sitting up here. I personally, you know, I don't want to sign my name out to something that I have nothing a part of.
So, the way that it would work procedurally in court, because the Board of Appeal is a party to the lawsuit, that if the parties went back to the judge and say, "Your Honor, for whatever reason, the developer doesn't follow through," then the judge would say, "Well, what's the position of the city on that, on that issue?" And that is where this comes along.
You, you are making a request of us.
Yes.
How much is the monetary settlement?
It is two hundred and five thousand dollars.
And who is it, Sonny Otis?
That is one of the principals behind the LLC that is the plaintiff.
Okay, now, is it the project actually being built on that lot, his lot?
No, it is not.
Did you, did we not approve something on, on...
There may be, I do not, I'm not aware of any, it's possible, but our, our project is ten to sixteen Everett Street.
And that's the one that Jay Council's the architect for, right?
Yes.
Okay, honestly, I don't even know why this is here. We, thank you for coming, thank you for presenting. We trust that the Law Department will do the right thing in, in ensuring that the rights of the property owners, the developers, and the Board of Appeal are maintained, okay?
May I ask just a clarification question, right? I mean, this, this discussion, and I, and I understand the complexity of it, and I do wanna make clear that the Board is actually not signing on to their settlement agreement that includes the monetary terms. It's signing on to really what is an agreement to dispose of the litigation, but if they don't meet some other agreement, we're not gonna oppose the ability of the plaintiff to restart the litigation, and that's really the only agreement that's being asked of the Board. Now, well, but, but it's going to be the Board's decision at that time whether or not to oppose, and so, I'm, if, if the Board's decision is to put this in the hands of the Law Department, that's fine, and, and we'll, and I'll take that, and I will, I will enter into an agreement that I believe is in the best interest of moving this along based on the fact that the Board made this approval. That being said, this conversation, based on the sentiment, seems as if it's ill-advising the Law Department to enter into an agreement to vacate, so I'm trying to understand, am I, am I authorized by this Board to enter into something that disposes of this litigation based on what's been presented?
I, I think we're suggesting that you use your best judgment in making your own decision, we're neither authorized or not authorized.
And I have to say, in the, I guess, at this moment in time, Mr. Bizani and I might be the longest-serving members of this Board. We've never had something like this come before us. Everything has been disposed of very clearly...
Yes.
...by the Law Department, which we appreciate.
Right. I mean, this is, this is different. Ordinarily, the Board is just not asked to sign on to these agreements, so it is, I agree, it's rare, and...
And I think it's kinda noby to have, you know, an abutter, you know, implicating the Board of Appeal in something else. I think it's kinda noby. I'm not sure I, I appreciate that.
No, that, that's fair. I think as an attorney for the Board, I've, I have an obligation to present it to the Board, and, and so, that, that is what I'm doing here today. But, I think, I, I think, I understand where the Board's stance is on this, and I will act in accordance with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Meeting is adjourned.